All right, let's call a meeting in order.
Bates Evans.
Here.
Casarag.
Here.
Here.
House.
Here.
Slifka?
Here.
Snackey?
Here.
Next item is the approval of these gentlemen's.
So moved.
Second.
Move and second in all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fosed. Okay, approval of two minutes of the November 12th, 2019 meeting and the November 14th, 2019 meeting.
Moved, do approve.
Second.
Second in all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fosed. All right, so we have one item on the agenda for this evening for a public hearing. That's a zoning ordinance text amendment. It's a request for text amendments to Chapter Two definitions of Title XI zoning of the Geneva Municipal Code and to add Chapter Sixteen inclusionary housing into Title XI zoning of the Geneva Municipal Code and text amendments to Chapter Four public open spaces of Title Twelve subdivisions of the Geneva Municipal Code, all related to incentives and creation for the creation of affordable housing within the city of Geneva. And the applicant is the city of Geneva. I'll read the procedures we'll go through in the meeting this evening, so everybody's on the same page. We now enter the public hearing portion of our meeting. It is the Planning and Zoning Commission's job to conduct these public hearings in order to receive testimony for and against petitions for general amendments to the zoning ordinance, zoning map amendments, zoning text amendments, special use permits, amendments to special use permits, and to consider requests for variations from the strict application of the city of Geneva zoning ordinance. The procedure we will follow for this request is as follows. First, the Planning and Zoning Commission Secretary or designated representative will read or describe written items, reports, and plans into the record. Second, the petitioner will present testimony in favor of the petition. Will present any supporting plans or exhibits. Third, the commission members will have an opportunity to question the petitioner. Fourth, the commission will then receive citizen testimony both for and against the petition. Questions about the proposal may be directed to the petitioner or petitioner's witnesses, and questions about the Planning and Zoning Commission process itself may be directed to me. For following such testimony, the petitioner and the Planning and Zoning Commission may ask questions of those who testified. Finally, the petitioner may provide a rebuttal to any testimony in opposition. When all the testimony is brought into the record, the hearing will be closed, and the Planning and Zoning Commission will make a recommendation to the city council in a form of motion or motions. In order to give testimony, you must provide your name and address and registration sheet located when you walked into this room. By signing the registration sheet, you agree and understand that anything you say will be considered sworn testimony and affirmed to tell the whole truth than nothing but the truth. When giving testimony, please approach the lectern, speak directly into the microphone so that you may be heard. Please begin by stating your name and giving your address. If you speak additional times, please state your name for each time for the record. Please be concise when presenting your testimony, if your point has already been made, it is not necessary to repeat it. Each of these points is recorded and will be considered as the Planning and Zoning Commission develops findings of fact and recommendation or recommendations. You may provide your testimony in written form, but such written testimony must be presented to Planning and Zoning Commission Secretary or designated representative prior to the closing of this hearing. After the process is completed and everyone wishing to present testimony has spoken, the commission will then decide whether it is her adequate testimony in order to make a decision. If it has, the public hearing will be closed. After the public hearing is closed, the Planning and Zoning Commission will refrain from conceding any additional testimony, either for or against petition. There is one exception to this rule. City staff will submit a report based on the testimony presented at the hearing. This report will consider comments or concerns from all city departments, such as the Fire Department, Public Works Department, or the Engineering Department. Okay, does everybody understand the process? Okay, at this time, I will minister the oath to those who have signed the registration form. Anyone wishing to give sworn testimony, ask questions, or cross-examine anyone given sworn testimony, please rise and raise your hand. Do you swear and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, thank you, Dave. All right, so you'll read the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The items we have on file include an application for zoning ordinance text amendments submitted by the Community Development Department, a PowerPoint presentation provided during the Committee of the Whole Policy Discussion on June 10th, 2019, a PowerPoint presentation provided during the Committee of the Whole Policy Discussion on August 26th, 2019, the Affordable Housing Planning and Appeals Act, a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated December 12th, 2019, draft amendments to Title XI and Title Twelve of the Geneva Municipal Code related to incentives for the creation of affordable housing, a PowerPoint presentation prepared for tonight's public hearing, and a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on November 27th for tonight's public hearing.
Very good.
Then I'll roll right into it.
You are the petitioner?
I am.
Or at least the city.
Okay, so before we review the proposed amendments, I'd like to quickly review some of the city's goals and objectives from our various planning documents, give an overview of the Affordable Housing Planning and Appeal Act, review the update provided by the Illinois Housing Development Authority provided in December of 2018, and then I'll review the proposed amendments, and we can have some discussion. Affordable housing has been a focus in several of the city's past planning efforts. One of the five goals in the Downtown Stationery Master Plan is to encourage a diversity of residential housing in and near downtown, including affordable senior housing and workforce housing. Affordable housing was also a key component of the Homes for Changing Region Plan adopted in 2014. I'll talk more about that in a few minutes. And affordable senior housing was a discussion as far back as 2003 in the city's comprehensive plan. More recently, in October of 2018, the city adopted a new strategic plan. At its strategic planning workshop in November of 2018, the council identified priorities from the plan that help us formulate the budget for the following fiscal year, and two of the prioritized objectives related to affordable housing for this fiscal year. The first objective in the Economic Vitality Section recognized that a well-functioning economy needs housing options available to all income levels to support its workforce. There are two action items that are associated with that objective. The first is to review and update the Homes for Changing Region Plan. We have budgeted for that for this year, and we hope to start work on that right after the holidays. The second item was to hold a study session with the city council to discuss strategies to create affordable housing in Geneva. The second prioritized objective was in the Quality of Life section, which addresses the need for economically diverse housing options to appeal to families and individuals at all ages, all stages of life, all backgrounds and ethnicities. Again, one of the action items there was to hold a study session with the city council to discuss strategies. So, we did that. We started that on June 10th. We held a policy discussion with the Committee of the Whole, and we reviewed a bunch of different strategies to obtain affordable housing. At that meeting, we looked at development incentives, inclusionary housing requirements, demolition taxes, property contributions, accessory dwelling units, and tax increment financing. At the end of that meeting, the council wanted to have more detailed information on some of those options, so staff prepared a draft inclusionary housing ordinance and demolition tax ordinance, kind of to help facilitate discussion at the August 26th meeting. We also reviewed in more detail development incentives, inclusionary housing requirements, demolition taxes, property contributions. After some discussion, the council directed staff to draft incentives to encourage affordable housing in the city. They did not want to pursue inclusionary housing requirements at this time. So in order to consider incentives for affordable housing in Geneva, it's important that we understand how affordable housing is defined by the Affordable Housing Planning and Appeals Act. I'll refer to it as APA or the Act throughout the rest of the presentation, just so I don't get tongue-tied. The tools available to us to provide incentives all tie back to the definitions in this act, so it's important that we're consistent with those definitions. The Act was passed by the state in 2003. The law recognized that many people who are vital to local economies and provide critical community services cannot afford to live in or around the places that they work. The Act established a process for identifying communities with a shortage of affordable housing stock, one for home buyers making 80% or less than the regional median income, or renters making 60% or less than the regional median income. Communities that were identified as not having at least 10% of their housing stock at those levels, affordable to incomes at those levels, were identified as non-exempt local governments. And the law requires those communities to adopt and submit an affordable housing plan to the Illinois Development Authority. In 2013, the city of Geneva was identified as a non-exempt local government due to only having 5.2% of its year-round housing stock considered affordable at those income levels. In December of 2018, we received notice that we are still identified as a non-exempt local government due to only having 7.7% of our housing stock in the affordable price points. As many of you know, we did not approve any affordable housing developments between 2013 and 2018, but we did see our share go up by 2.5%. You might be wondering how that's possible. And without going through a detailed methodology, I'll just say that it's variables in that equation that have changed in that five-year span. For example, a mortgage interest rate was used of 4.8% in 2013, and that dropped to 3.98% in 2018. It's a 17% decrease. The area median income increased by 5.25% on average, depending on the household sizes, but property values only increased at 3.44%. So a lot of communities saw their share of affordable housing stock increase. I think it was 22 out of the 68 communities that were on the list in 2013 actually dropped off the list in 2018 because they now exceeded the 10% threshold.
So it wasn't due to housing provisions?
It wasn't necessarily tied to providing new housing, right? So returning back to the definition of affordable housing for a second. The total number of rental and owner-occupied units are added together and divided by the sum total of the housing units to determine the percentage. The law does not require that a certain percentage be rental or a certain percentage be owner-occupied. Affordable rental housing means that no more than 30% of the gross annual income for a household of that size may occupy, the size that may occupy the unit goes into rent and utilities. Affordable owner-occupied means that no more than 30% of the income for a household of that size can go into mortgage insurance and association fees, et cetera. So just to give you an idea of what that looks like in real numbers, on the left, we have rental housing, and on the right, we have owner-occupied housing. For example, a one-bedroom apartment would be affordable at just over $1,000 a month in Geneva compared to a fair market rent of $1,300 a month. A four-person family living in a three-bedroom home would be affordable at $233,000 compared to a median home value in Geneva of $315,000. And then this chart shows the different incomes. So you have the 80% of AMI and 60% of AMI. Then at the bottom of the slide are examples of public sector positions, people working in and for the community who cannot afford to either rent or own a home on their own in the city of Geneva. So we have the library, Park District, King County. We have library assistants, preschool teachers, teachers with a bachelor's degree and eight years of experience. There's, of course, examples in the private sector as well, like dental assistants, caregivers, sales associates, store managers, et cetera. So what all that means for Geneva is we were required to prepare an affordable housing plan, and per the Act, a plan has to include a statement of the total number of housing units that are necessary to become exempt, to reach that 10% threshold. We have to identify lands within the community that might be suitable for development of affordable housing or redevelopment into affordable housing, and incentives that the government can provide for the purpose of attracting affordable housing, which is largely why we're here tonight. The plan must also include one of the following goals: a minimum of 15% of all new development or redevelopment within the area would be considered affordable housing, a minimum of a 3% point increase in the total percentage of affordable housing units, or a minimum of a total of 10% of affordable units, reaching that 10% threshold. So in 2014, the city adopted the Homes for Changing Region Plan, which satisfied each of these requirements, but since we still don't meet the 10% threshold, we have to update that by summer of 2020. As I mentioned earlier, we have that in the budget, and we plan to get started on that shortly. The 2014 plan included a statement that we needed 363 affordable units to meet that 10% threshold. It included a map of areas that might be suitable for affordable housing, and it included a recommendation that at least 15% of all new developments be affordable. With the new numbers in 2018, since we have increased to 7.7%, we're looking at approximately 180 units now that we would need to satisfy that 10% requirement. So this is the map that was adopted, actually, the amended map. We had one in 2014, and we amended it a year later, showing properties that might be suitable for affordable housing or redevelopment into affordable housing. Since that time, the properties that are marked with an X here have been developed or approved for development and are no longer candidates. As a mostly built-out community, this leaves us with very few opportunities to meet our affordable housing needs. This is really why it's important for the city to go beyond just the planning portion and provide incentives to help encourage it in the community. Just briefly, in addition to the requirements of the Act, there's actually a real demand for affordable housing in Geneva. The Homes for Changing Region Plan projected housing rental needs, housing and rental needs for the community. This graph here shows the projected needs for owner-occupied housing. The hatch mark shows the 2011 housing stock affordable at various income levels as you go across. The light blue shows the projected demand in 2011, and the dark blue shows the projected demand in 2014. As shown, there's shortfalls for low, moderate, and middle-income households. There's also shown a potential for upscale housing, which we've definitely seen our share of in the past few years. So this is the same chart for rental housing. Again, the hatch mark shows the 2011 housing stock affordable at different levels. The light orange shows the projected demand in 2011, and the dark orange shows the projected demand in 2040. As you can see here, there's a shortfall for households earning below $35,000 and a potential market for households earning more than $75,000. I apologize, I thought my cursor here was showing up on the screen. It's not. I just noticed that. Any questions on that? So that's the background. As quickly as I could go through it, we can circle back on any of those if we need to, but I wanted to run through the proposed amendments. So although there is a high demand for affordable housing and a law that strongly encourages it in the city, we've not been able to create affordable housing in recent years. It's not due to a lack of interest. We actually have conversations pretty regularly with affordable housing developers that are interested. It's because we have high land costs, we have low-density-based zoning, and we haven't established any other tools to help make projects feasible. Developers rely on a lot of different tools to make affordable housing feasible: tax credits through the state, local incentives that can be provided, property contributions, fee waivers, density bonuses, et cetera. So under the direction of the Committee of the Whole, we prepared these amendments to the zoning and subdivision ordinances to provide incentives to hopefully be able to engage with the developer and make a project feasible. The first part of the proposed amendments is to Section 11-2-2, simply establishing definitions for the terms listed here. The definitions we've proposed in the draft are consistent with the definitions in the Affordable Housing Planning and Appeal Act and are really necessary to make sure we have effective implementation of the incentives that are being proposed. The second part of the proposed amendments is to add a new chapter to the zoning ordinance, Chapter Sixteen, Inclusionary Housing. This chapter would consist of nine sections. It's obviously the meat and potatoes of what we're talking about tonight. I'm not going to go through each section in great detail, but I do want to just touch on kind of the substantive portions. Section Two outlines what developments would be eligible for incentives. Any residential development containing six or more dwellings in any of the following instances: a development consisting of new residential construction or mixed-use construction with a residential component; a development consisting of the renovation or reconstruction of over 50% of the total square footage of an existing residential structure that increases the number of residential units in the structure; a development that will change the use of an existing building in whole or in part from non-residential to residential; and finally, a development that includes the conversion of a multifamily rental property into condominiums. Originally, we proposed that the number six was chosen as a minimum development size because, as we'll go through in a minute, we're recommending that at least 15% of a development be considered affordable in order to be eligible for the incentives that are being proposed. So you would need, you know, one unit is just over 15% of six units. But I've since realized the flaw in that logic, because you could certainly have a development that's less than six units that has more than 15% of the units affordable, and we should be encouraging that as well and providing incentives in those situations. So if the commission agrees, I recommend that we amend the language to get rid of that minimum unit count of six, to read the affordable housing incentives provided in this chapter shall apply to proposed residential developments in any of the following instances. And then those four instances I just reviewed. And we would still have the requirement that at least 15% have to meet that requirement. Everybody okay with that proposed change? Okay. So as I just mentioned, a key recommendation is that at least 15% of a residential development be affordable. Yes? Sure.
So you took out the word "any."
I think I was just wordsmithing. In any of the following.
I don't know that any is, to me, that says that anything that meets the six criteria or the criteria you previously proposed would be subject to... Eligible for the incentives. I don't know. And maybe it makes the same, maybe it means that... To me, clarify that we talk, anything that meets the criteria will be meeting. So you're not intending to change the meaning at all?
I wasn't. I just thought it was maybe an unnecessary, but if you're more comfortable with it, then that's fine. So the reason we chose 15% of the development to be affordable, to be eligible for the incentives, is that's consistent with the goal that the city established in the Homes for Changing Region Plan in 2014. It's also consistent with one of the goals the state says you can adopt for your affordable housing plan. So that's why we settled on 15% for the minimum amount to be considered eligible for incentives. And then if there's any fraction, we're trying to make it clear in the ordinance that anything above .5 rounds up and anything below rounds down. For affordability, as I mentioned earlier, these are the measures the state uses to determine the city's affordable housing stock: the 80% of AMI for owner-occupied and 60% of AMI for rentals. So we just want to be clear that if we're providing incentives, we're doing it to create affordable units that are minimally compliant with the Affordable Housing Planning and Appeal Act. We're also recommending that a certificate of qualification is issued for any household whose income has been verified to meet those thresholds in either purchase or rent a unit. Also included in Section Three are integration requirements. So affordable units would be required to be dispersed amongst market-rate units, constructed concurrently with the market-rate units, and be compatible with market-rate units with substantially similar building materials, finishes on the exterior. Interiors could have different finishes and different floor areas, but must be the same in terms of bedroom mix and energy efficiency. So getting to the incentives. So if a development can comply with all of those requirements, what are the incentives the city can offer? The first is a waiver of the permit fees, plan review fees, utility connection fees, and cash contributions to the school and park districts when land is not being required. As proposed, fee waivers would only be, would only apply to affordable units. Customary fees would apply to all the market-rate units. If the commission agrees, I also have a proposed amendment to this section. The intent of waiving fees would be to make a project financially feasible and not necessarily to waive fees unnecessarily. As it's written, after reading it a few times, an applicant meeting the requirements of the section would simply have to request the waiver, and it sounds like it's an automatic waiver. So I'm proposing just a few changes here, shown in red, to say that upon written request to the city, including a demonstrated financial need, shall receive a waiver or a partial waiver of those fees. So making sure that we are bridging the gap and not just waiving fees unnecessarily. Does that make sense? Or is there any other...
I guess I don't get the part about the demonstrated financial need of the developer?
Right, so the developer would request the waiver of the fees, but they would have to show you the need and why the project's not financially feasible without the waiver.
I would have thought we would be incentivizing them regardless of their financial need. I mean, trying to just get people to come in and do it, right? Or no, they have to not be able to afford it otherwise?
I mean, that would be why you would grant the waivers, but if you're looking at it to be more of an attractive incentive, to just say it's always waived in those instances, we could leave it as written.
Okay.
I think Brad makes a good point, and I have some comments later as to how effective this is likely to be, but if we leave it alone, it's more effective than if we change it.
Is there a consensus amongst the commission?
Any waiver, partial or full, would result in affordable housing units being developed, correct? There's not a scenario where some fees would be waived, and we wouldn't end up making progress towards our goals, right?
That's the intent, right.
I'm just trying to figure out why you were worried about reading it initially, that somebody can get a waiver but not comply with the...
For example, if there's $100,000 gap that we need to close to make the project feasible, but waiving all of these fees is $300-plus thousand. but waiving all of these fees is $300-plus thousand dollars, is that something we want to do to incentivize it? Or do we want to say that we will commit to waiving proportionate share of the fees to make the project feasible?
You do that, but if we make it so it's required for financial viability, the project here, you haven't done that with any of the other incentives. Maybe those aren't needed either. Then you have to go through the whole project and analyze every aspect of it, what variables are needed to truly make this work and which ones aren't. So, unless you're prepared to do that, I would leave it alone here, too.
But what other incentives are there besides this?
So, there's cost offsets. It could be property contributions, if the city owns property, that they can either sell below market rate, and I'll get to those in a second. Or if it's located in a TIF district, you can use TIF funds to assist affordable housing. There's the density bonuses. So, those are really...
I like the fact that, how you have it worded right now because, like you said, if a builder does come in and it's not needed, he doesn't need the full, in your example, 300 versus 100, why would we, why would we just give that up?
Right.
By how you word it now, you still can waive it. By how you had it worded, we're waiving it no matter what.
As long as you're building a portable housing.
Of course. Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
I mean, David, the commission historically had difficulty dealing with the fee waiver requirements of applicants. I mean, we just have a hard time with that. We've had it from in the past where we have people requesting waivers for school district and park district fees and stuff. We used to have that. We have four examples over the last couple of years. We just have a really difficult time dealing with that issue. I'm not a financial guy, so like, I can't make a judgment on whether they're meeting a financial need, you know? You guys, same kind of thing. I mean, who's going to make that determination?
Well, I think ultimately, it'd be the city council that makes that determination upon the plan commission's recommendation. For any of these incentives, we're likely to enter into a component of this draft is an affordable housing agreement with the developers, so we can clearly outline.
But are you going to propose the same thing for the other incentives? Like, maybe you don't really need the density bonus. Maybe you don't really need some of these other things. Maybe you really don't need the city to contribute property. It really means tearing apart the entire proposal, it seems to me. And if you're not going to tear the whole thing apart, I don't know why you would single out this one incentive as being the place where you need to.
Because it gives you an out.
But if you're not doing it for all the other things that make the project more profitable for the developer, why do you care particularly about this one?
Maybe the developer doesn't need it.
But he might not need the other ones either.
I wonder...
The other incentives. Right?
Yeah. I just, I think by having this in there, it gives you leverage. By not having it in there, it gives you no leverage. I would rather have a little bit of leverage, or I would rather have the city have a little bit of leverage.
Yes, Michael. So, but the fees are only on the market rate units and not on the overall development, correct?
On the affordable.
Only on the affordable units.
I'm sorry, on the affordable units and not the entire development. So, there's some limitation in terms of what that could be relative to the overall project.
If it's 15% of a project, yes, it could be limited, but if it's a 100% affordable housing project that generates 50 units, those fees could be pretty substantial. And to waive them if they're not all needed, I guess, was my thought. If you have 50 units, it's a hefty amount of fees.
What are the thoughts of the school district and the park district on this item, since it's, their money we're waiving?
To be frank, this came out of some conversation with the school district. They're supportive of the incentives where needed, was kind of...
Well, that makes a difference, since it's their fees. If they want it to be worded demonstrated need, then it seems to me that that's the reason to do it.
I mean, we just saw that. I mean, teachers can't afford it.
Right.
I find myself looking at it and wondering if we didn't have including a demonstrated financial need in there, and I'll get to that in a second, but left in or partial fee waiver, that'll leave some subjectivity in working with the city on an affordable housing plan. What challenges me about the demonstrated financial need is, who is it to say what is an appropriate profit margin for a for-sale developer? You know, whether they make 3% or 25% on a development? That shouldn't be our purview. So, you know, it gets into profit as well as just covering your costs, right? So, I just think that if you said we'll receive a waiver or partial waiver, that means there has to be a dialogue between the city and the applicant on what is an appropriate amount of fee waiver.
Yeah. I think we need to move on because we're going to have to debate this a little bit. So, let's move on to some of the other items because I don't think we're going to get an agreement right away on that one.
So, some of the other ways to offset costs would include TIF funds and property contributions. The city has two established tips where eligible costs could be considered for the creation of affordable housing. The city also has city-owned properties throughout the community that they could offer at below fair market value or donate the property to a development containing affordable housing. The other incentive included in the draft is increased density. It's proposed to allow one additional market rate unit for each affordable unit, provided the total density of the project does not exceed 115% of what is otherwise allowed in that zoning class. So, for example, if a proposed maximum density is 20 units, to qualify for the incentives, three of those units would need to be affordable. And then up to an additional three units would be allowed for a total of 23 units. To implement the density bonus, it would be likely that there would be need to vary some of the bulk requirements, like minimum lot area, lot frontage, lot coverage, and minimum setbacks. So, it's proposed that those can be varied without additional justification to accommodate that increased density. With some...
By right, if they meet all of this, or would we still get an opportunity to visit that development of the commission?
I mean, it would still be reviewed by the commission, and we'd be making sure that, you know, we're not reducing a setback that's obstructing...
It's hurting an adjacent property owner for some reason. Okay.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that? Because I had a question about that in the proposed, the draft, where it says, "Without additional justification provided." And I thought that was weird, where they would... I'm looking on page four of the draft. Item two at the top. And I thought that was weird that they wouldn't need to justify those variations, kind of like what John is saying. Seems like they would need to say, okay, well, we're taking advantage of the density bonus. We need to reduce our setback.
I guess that's...
And here's why.
Without additional justification. So, the justification is that there's a density bonus being awarded. If you're given a plot of land and it can yield 20 units under the regulations, but we're saying it can now yield 23, that's going to necessitate some variation to accommodate the three additional lots.
But I don't want to get caught up in semantics again, like Scott suggested, but I just, I don't know. I'm having a hard time that, without justification part, but we can get into that later.
Yeah.
And it may get down to "may" or "shall," because it says "may," which to me leaves some subjectivity in the approval process, but...
Okay.
I'm not an attorney.
Do you have more questions along the way? Because, or did we get through this whole presentation?
I mean, I know we have members in the audience, too, so maybe get through it and we can circle back after.
Yeah, I made just general feedback on the section in terms of our general thought processes, finally.
So, as I promised, I did not want to go through each section of the draft. Some of it's more administrative or kind of legalese of an ordinance. If there's any sections that you want to dive into in more detail, let me know, and we can get into those. I did want to get through just two more slides first. The final amendment was shown in Title 12, Chapter 4 of the subdivision ordinance, and that's, again, reiterating that cash contributions to school and park districts may be waived because it's repeated in that chapter. But as we just got through discussing, I was proposing some changes to that language, too, to make, to take it from a "may," or "shall," to a "may," and say when there's a demonstrated financial need, those fees may be waived. But that was really kind of my quick run-through of the meat and potatoes of the incentives being proposed. Happy to answer questions now, or if we want to hear from the audience first.
So, no demolition tax?
Correct. That was one of the strategies the council was, did not want to pursue at this time.
From the audience and then back to our questions.
Thank you, David.
Thanks, David.
Okay. Anyone in the public wishing to speak on this matter? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward. State your name and address, please.
Tracy Manning, and I didn't sign in, but I will.
That's fine.
The Burton Foundation. We develop affordable housing. And 2090 Larkin Avenue, Elgin.
All right. Thank you.
Going through the presentation, I was very impressed. It's nice for somebody to be talking about what I do for a living. I wanted to just clarify a few points, just from the developer's perspective, going into IDA, the Illinois Housing Development Authority, and what we have to go through in the whole scoring development point system to win an award for financing. And while the APA identifies 80% for homeowners and 60% for rentals, the AMI at IDA kind of doesn't really mesh well with APA. They actually with the, and I won't get into the details, but if you look into income averaging now, that IDA has incorporated, it's actually 80% or less of the AMI. So, I would want to ask if you could consider, when you're writing this, on the rental side, while APA does say 60% rentals at AMI and 80% AMI at homeowners, consider 80% for the rentals because of the whole income averaging that we're using in our underwriting today.
Can you put that into some perspective on what that would mean income-wise, the difference?
So, you know, it might be $20,000 annually.
So, the $37,000 that was on a slide that David showed, for someone wanting to rent, I think, a studio or a one-bedroom apartment?
Yes, yes. That's a one-person.
That means they need to be making 57?
It does go up. Actually, the 80% is about $72,000, I believe. So, these are folks with real jobs...
Right.
...that want to live in affordable housing in Geneva and up and down Randall Road. All those folks, they want to live here, they can't afford it. Their incomes will fall within the 80% area median income. And I can get into the whole scoring with you if you'd like, but the 80% is really key in when you're writing this, as opposed to the 60% AMI for rentals.
So, excuse me, I'm not nimble in this discussion per se as far as setting rents. So, are rents then set off of somebody making $72,000, being able to afford it, so that the teacher making 48 or 52 would not be able to afford that one-bedroom apartment in Geneva? So, why would, I'm just wondering why we would go up and restrict some of our...
Because in our underwriting, what we do is we do different set-asides. So, we are...
What does that mean?
I'm sorry. The 50%, 60%, 80%. We will change in our underwriting rents.
Okay.
So, folks who are nail techs or dental hygienists...
Right.
...might meet this maybe 50% area. We'll have a few of those units. A lot of 60% area median income rents will be for, you know, a little higher income. So, those rents are set at that level.
Okay.
And then the 80% is a much higher annual income, and those rents are even higher. But they're nowhere near market rate.
So, the effect of what you're saying is, we're not going to exclude the nail tech who's making $37,000, but you'll get, you'll be able to develop and capture some of the incentives for people making above 37, making the $72,000, because you're still renting to someone that meets the other definition of AMI or whatever.
Well, APA does say the 80% rental, the Illinois Housing Development Authority, where David started the conversation, is where we give our application of 500 documents to win the financing. And they are at 80% for rentals because of the whole new income averaging.
And it...
So, if we do what you're requesting, the units, there would be fewer units that are affordable to the lower end than there would be with the, what David has proposed, correct?
A handful.
Okay. So, then my next question is to David. You said from the beginning that you wanted to be consistent.
I don't think he knew.
So, do we need to be consistent with that, and this is not really an option? Or how does that, how does that work, David?
So, I appreciate Tracy's comments, and I understand what she's saying, but I think we have the ability to offer these incentives through that act. So, we can only sell, we can only contribute property, like either sell it below market rate or donate property below market rate if we're providing affordable housing that is consistent with that act. So, I mean, that's why I drafted it that way, to be consistent with the act, to make sure that we're not abusing our powers or implementing powers we don't have, given to us by the state. Yeah, so I don't...
So, it's not an option to do what she's asking? Sounds like you're saying it's not an option to change to what she's asking for.
I would say that at least 15% of, like, if the whole project was affordable housing, at least 15% of that should be at that 60% or below for rentals.
Okay. So, but if it was more than 15% affordable, some of it could be at a different rate, like what she's asking for.
Right. Because I mean, what we're suggesting is that to be eligible for these incentives, at least 15% has to be affordable. So, if it's an entirely affordable development, there's nothing precluding the other 85% from being 80%, 70%.
Right. Okay.
But those, if they were above the 60 or 80% as defined in yours, but they met the 80% test of the other definition that Tracy was talking about, those units that would still be, she'd still call affordable, would not qualify for our incentives, right? That's where I think the rub is.
So, I think it actually could work because, remember, the vehicle we use to develop affordable housing is Section 42 of the IRS Tax Code, requiring us to be at 60% of the area median income. So, the 60%ers, the majority, are going to be at 60%. What I'm asking is that, because IDA now is recognizing the 80% AMI, to consider that in your narrative. Because we're, everything, it's not going to be an 80% development. It can't be. Because the section 40, the vehicle we use to develop requires us to be at 60%. Just, there's a handful that could be at 80%, and if you don't include that in this ordinance or whatever you call it, that could mess us up, and I could get into that.
It could mess you up because of the lack of incentives for some of those. Is what you're asking that we create this to be consistent, as David wanted to, with the Affordable Housing Act? But also, could it be somewhat discretionary? If you came and said, we're going to do another 20 units that are at the 80% versus 60, we'd like the incentives for that, and that allows the city to work with you and maybe provide... like the incentives for that, and that allows the city to work with you and maybe provide those? Is that where you're, is that where you're going on this, or no?
I'm not really even talking about the incentives right now.
Okay.
All I'm asking is that the narrative written for affordable be at 80 or below.
So you read the definition.
The definition of affordable.
Definition is what you're asking to have changed.
Be at 80% or below the area median in...
So nothing would be required of 60%?
And then if you choose to divvy up 100% of 50 units.
But then if, but then if a developer comes in and everything is at 80% or every, some of stuff's going to, we could end up with, without the 15% at 60% that David said that other act required, so I'm not, I don't know how to make this work.
And if it was rental property, we wouldn't, you're saying we would still give the incentives, even though it didn't qualify as affordable housing?
It will, if it's an affordable housing developer like myself.
Right.
It is going to meet the litmus test for affordable housing because the vehicle we use as developers requires us to be at 60%. IDA, the Illinois Housing Development Authority, is just, there's an income averaging, you can read about it, it goes up to 80%. So all I am asking is to consider, when you say affordable housing, 80% or below, and then get into the details of how you want to, you know, cut that up.
So you're saying define it as 80%, but then these incentives, if we refer to 60%, that's still, that works in your scenario?
Well, if you want to say, you know, a development, an affordable housing development is, is 100% of the units are at or below 80% of the area median income, then you can say, and take it a step further and decide, okay, for rounding 100 unit property, you can only have 15 units at 80%. Then you can get into that and start demanding what developers, you want them to do. But just for our purposes, to get an application for financing with the income averaging, IDA allows 80, their definition is 80%.
You couldn't get financing if we were at 60? Because isn't that more?
Well, but your definition, the way it states, is at 60% or below. And APA, and while they're both state agencies, APA and IDA don't agree. And that's...
Imagine that, surprise.
Yeah, so that's, I'm just trying to bring to light that the two agencies don't agree on the area median income for affordable housing.
So this must have been dealt with in some of these other communities that are ahead of us?
Well, it's just a couple of years old with the whole income averaging.
So...
With IDA.
So has any other community resolved this?
Yeah, please, David. I, I don't, I don't think the way it's drafted precludes what you're proposing.
Right.
Because what we're saying is that 15% of the development has to be at 60% or below. The rest of it could frankly be market rate.
Oh, good.
And you're still eligible for incentives.
Right, exactly, exactly.
So if you want to do 15% at 60% or below and the rest of it 80%, you would still be eligible for the incentives. So I, I guess I'm not seeing the problem with the way it's proposed.
I'm not sure there is one.
I just saw affordable housing at 60%, and I wasn't sure if...
But only 15% of the development needs to be at that 60% or below to be eligible for the incentives, so you could do any blend you want after that.
And you said IDA's going to hold you to anyway, so...
Right.
Yeah, they do.
So I'm not sure that there's, there's a conflict.
But the incentives don't, but the incentives will only apply to the 15%. For example, the fee waiver of that 6 would only be on the 15%.
Right.
The ones that were at 60%, and if she has another 20 units that are at 75%, she won't get those incentives on those units. And I know that was part of your...
I guess, I guess if that's part of the question...
Is that part of your concern?
But she said it wasn't.
If that's not the concern, then I think David's right. If it is, then it's different.
Okay.
So which was your concern?
My concern only is right now that affordable housing is 80% or below.
The definition of...
Yeah.
Well, that's only for, that's only for the incentives.
I think the purpose here is, we're trying to, correct me if I'm wrong, is we're trying to provide for incentives that would allow at least portions of these developments that come into Geneva to provide housing for those that earn less, those, the various careers that David, and jobs that David put up there. It doesn't, it can be a whole project, but we have a number of projects that can come through, and they don't have an affordable component. And I, and I think we're trying to incentivize that to be included in some of these developments going forward.
I don't think it's a problem. I don't think IDA would find this a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the developer has the ability to do above and beyond what we have as base level. That's just, you can do that. If it's, if that's the way you do your development, you can do it. We're not telling you you can't do it, we're just telling you at least 15% of it has to be at 60.
It's a minimum.
That's all, that's the only mandate that we're giving on the process. Everything else is open for discussion. Are, are any other items? Is that it for you, ma'am? Okay, I guess so. Anyone else wish to talk about this item in the public? Anyway. Well, okay.
Can we ask questions?
It's time, time to ask the questions, yes.
Do we need to close the public hearing?
Well, I guess so, if there's nobody here to...
They might want to participate in the discussion.
And I think we, we may bring something up that creates...
Hey, yeah, I mean, I think we're still open enough that we can't really...
Okay, I was just asking.
Just in case, because we may go into an area that like, may like change out a whole section or something. But, okay. I mean, I want to just do general, because it's a big topic, so I want just general questions. Go ahead, Man.
I have lots of questions, but I won't ask them all now. I'll just say it's kind of the bigger general ones first, and then I have some specific ones. My first question is, do these kind, I haven't read what's going on in a lot of other communities, but I assume that these are somewhat modeled on what has been done elsewhere. Have they been successful? Are these the kind of incentives that make, make a difference and result in units being built?
To, to varying degrees. We, we've asked ourselves the same question, and we surveyed some of these other communities. Some haven't had any activity. Some have had developers, well, first of all, a lot of, a lot of the other communities, I'd say the majority of them, that have established these type of incentives have done it in conjunction with a requirement that 15% of a development becomes affordable. And in that instance, when you have it as a requirement, there's, there's often the option to have a, pay a fee in lieu of actually building the affordable units. So in many of those communities, they've not had a lot of success getting developers to actually construct the units, but they will pay a fee in lieu of, unless the fee in lieu of is high enough that it really pushes them to construct the units. And in, in that instance, it's been more successful in more urban areas where higher density is, is, is there. You know, you have higher density zoning that allows you to go up and build 50, 60 units. In my time here with the city, every time I talk to an affordable housing developer, we're, we're looking at two and a half to five acres, 50 to 60 unit range is kind of the minimum for an affordable housing project when they're pursuing their credits with the state. So that, as we know, is challenging to, to accommodate in Geneva with just the limited opportunities we have for new development. So, I don't mean to be long-winded with it, but I, some communities have had some success with it, and other communities have not. They've, they've received the payment in lieu of, and then they have to have an affordable housing trust fund and figure out what to do with those funds, whether it's offered down payment assistance to first time home buyers, or to purchase property and make those available for development.
It doesn't sound like you have a lot of confidence that this is going to work, since the second part of my question was, this is an optional, this isn't a requirement, that they include affordable units, it's optional. And if it's optional, why would anything be any different than it has been as far as what developers come in here and buy, that, I mean, build? It doesn't sound like you think this is enough, it's going to happen.
I think this, I think it's a, it's a start, because right now, we don't have an established policy saying that we will waive fees, we will contribute properties, or we will consider developments in our, in our TIF districts. So when we have those conversations with a developer, you know, they're considering several different locations when they're filling out their applications on where they want to pursue. And when we kind of shrug our shoulders and say, I don't know if this city will waive fees, and I don't, I don't know if we'll give a density bonus, you'll have to go through a rigorous public hearing process. Those are, those are obstacles that are probably not worth the risk when you're considering multiple locations, when other communities have clear incentives. So I think this is a step in the right direction, and the council's position when they discussed it back in August was, let's take this first step, and if, if we're not getting anywhere with it, then maybe we take the next step and make it a requirement and establish a housing commission and, you know, fees in lieu of and all of that to, to go further.
So...
Go ahead, I'm saving the rest of my more specific questions.
And, so the goal is to have a housing, an affordable housing component or stock increased within the town, within the city. At some point, we want actual units developed, not just cash going into a fund, right? So, and I guess, if a developer gets to a point, do they have a right just to say, okay, we've done all this, that you guys have approved the development, we're just going to write a check instead of taking, instead of actually building the units? Or does that decision made early on, and we can factor that in, do we give somebody a density bonus if they're just writing a check, and we're not getting any affordable housing benefit from it, right? Do we have that right to...
So, and that's, there's, first of all, inclusionary housing ordinance where it's a required component.
Right.
There's only, there's less than 10 in the state that I could, I could find that, that do it. And part of the concern with making it a requirement is, are we going to scare off development in total?
Market rate development.
Right. Again, in my, my experience here, it's, you know, there's, there's market rate developers, and there's affordable housing developers, and they want to do one or the other, and not, not necessarily a blend. Sure, there are blended projects in the region that have been done, but through use of those kind of tools. Help, I'm sorry, John, I'm trying to circle back to your question.
Well, I, I just, can, and I realize somebody can write a check, I just want to make sure that, that's just not the easy way out. Okay, we've quantified this, it's, you know, we should have put five units in, it's 40,000 a unit, we'll write a $200,000 check, and we get, we get increased density and we get...
And that largely depends on the size of that check. I mean, there, when we looked at the in lieu of fees, they ranged from $30,000 to $130,000.
Right.
And, you know, the communities that had $130,000 per unit in, in lieu of fees had more success in negotiating affordable housing units.
Right.
But that's, that's a steep fee.
Has to be meaningful.
Right. And, and those, they had lower fees, obviously, collected more into their funds.
When, when those projects come forward for discussion in a public hearing, we'll know whether they're going to actually build the units or write a check. Is that right?
Through this proposal?
Just practically, how this is going to be implemented. If something comes in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission...
There is no writing a check here, if there's not required.
Right, through this proposal, there is, there's no in lieu of...
But they have a right, don't they? And is that not, that's not part of this yet?
Because it's not, it's not being proposed as a requirement, it's an incentive, there's no, there's no fee in lieu of...
So they only get the incentives if they actually build the units the way you've crafted it?
So, so right now, all we're talking about tonight is the incentive aspect.
Right.
And then the city council, if they're, if we're not getting anybody to go for this, then the city council will look down the road at possibly...
To reevaluate and decide if we should make it a harder requirement.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, Brad. I don't know, it's probably, I know it's relative to size, but, I mean, can you give us some hard number of what a developer is going to save in the fees, in the waiving of the cash in lieu of, you know, like, I thought maybe a good example would be, I know it was on your map of potential development sites. There's that property sort of by Fox Valley Orthopedics.
On the curve, on the bend?
Yep.
On Lewis Road?
On Lewis. Yeah. So, let's say that site got developed, and let's say, how much, I just trying to quantify, I guess in my head, how much the, a more typical developer is going to save by taking advantage of these incentives?
So...
In a, in a, you know, a normal development range.
On, on a site like that, that city, that's a city owned site.
Right.
So there's, there's a big, it depends there. I mean, if we're contributing the site, maybe they pay all the fees. If we're selling below market rate, maybe they don't need the waiver on the fees. But if, let's say it's not a city owned site, and it's privately owned, and they need a waiver on the fees, you're looking at, that site is zoned for 50 units, I think, or thereabouts.
That's helpful.
You have utility connection fees for sewer and water, they're, they're $695 per unit. So, that times 50 units. Your land cash fees, depends on your, your bedroom mix, but you're looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars between the school and the park there.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Yes. I would, definitely a six-figure number between the two of them.
Can I, I'm sorry, real quick, though, i- is it, as we're getting long here, I was, I was confused about, is it just the waiver on the 15, or is it on the whole 50 units?
Just on the affordable units.
Right.
So, but if, let's say all 50 units were affordable, that would be a substantial savings of...
But was that your question, Brad? Was if all 50?
I'm not, I mean, I, I'm not sure what my intention in the question was. I kind of got the answer I was looking for, but I see where you're coming from too, John, because I was, in my head, I was doing, okay, what did you say, 695? So say $700, times 50 is like $35,000, right?
Times two, because you've got sewer and waters, and you're 70,000.
So, but that is if everything is affordable.
If everything, yeah.
Which is sort of what Tracy does. They would all be affordable, is that correct? But then, I'm, I don't know why, tell me if I'm wrong, I'm picturing more of a, as I was reading this, and maybe it's just from the experience that I've had in these, these three years I've been on the commission, picturing more of a, a market rate developer trying to take advantage of incentives rather than more, more of that, but, because why wouldn't, why wouldn't you have done that already and gotten, it can't just because of the city, is it, so the reason you haven't, somebody like her company hasn't developed that property yet because they're waiting for more incentives from the city of Geneva?
We don't have any established at this point, so that's...
That's what I mean. So is that's what, holding them back? Or is it other reasons, myriad of reasons?
And...
I don't know.
I'm just, just to, I can turn it over to Tracy if you like, but I, I think there's, there's that portion where we don't have any established incentives now. For a market rate developer, I think the incentive here would be, well, I can, I can get 20 lots out of this, 20 market rate lots out of this, but if I give you three affordable, you know, then I, then I can increase my density. So, with, with market rate. So there might be some incentive there, and I can get a waiver on fees, and maybe the project becomes more viable. Again, without, without having tested it, it's hard.
But the threshold we have to overcome, Brad, is the land value and our fees. I mean, they're so hard, I mean, the numbers are so high that, you know, three, three lots is like, given the numbers you're working with, it's just not enough.
What other fees are there besides the sewer and water, like you just said, at 695 per connection, and then...
Yeah, I mean...
Inspection fees, things like that, are we talking about too?
Yeah, all the fees.
Plan review fees.
Fees, the school fees are...
School fees.
I mean, they're, it's a big hit.
Yeah, I mean, plan, plan review fees is a percentage of the, of the overall public improvement cost, and depending on how big the development is, public improvements can be anywhere from...
Yeah.
I mean, they could be in a million dollar range if you're putting in a new street and streetlights and all that, so...
He has to build a half million dollar house.
So like, would this have substantially changed greenhouse point? If this was in place, do you think?
I don't know that they would have been incentivized to do it. I mean, in that case, they, they requested a rezoning and got the density they needed. But maybe, maybe if they got one unit for every affordable one they made, they, they could have made the density and the numbers work without the rezoning.
That's an interesting point, greenhouse point. So suppose this was in place, and they came in and they did want a rezoning, which, which they got, so they got higher density, could we say... Could we say, if it's not a requirement, I mean, could we use this as leverage and say we want a certain percentage to be affordable? And if you do that, well, you get these incentives and we'll do the rezoning. I mean, how does this fit into the kind of negotiations we usually get into?
The intent is to make it an incentive at this point and not, not a hammer.
So we can't make it a requirement here either, even with negotiating?
But I think, I think as a commission, if you're looking at rezoning of property for higher density, and we have adopted planning, several different planning documents that speak to affordable housing, and we now have a policy about increasing density to accommodate affordable housing, I think that can factor into your decision-making on whether or not to grant a rezoning for higher density simply to make numbers work.
That I like.
Without an affordable component.
That's a little additional feather in our cap, but...
Yeah, that, that would be a helpful tool.
But we're still trying to overcome an enormous financial barrier.
And I mean, if that's, if that's something the commission wants, I mean, we can, we can run some spreadsheets with some developments that have happened on, on what those cash contributions were, what their public improvement costs were. They are substantial. So I think if, if you were able to waive those fees, especially if it was entirely an affordable housing development, there'd be a cost savings for sure in waiving those fees.
It'd be interesting to see in hypothetical, like something like Green House Point and then apply these incentives to a certain percentage of the units and kind of do a hypothetical reworking of it and see if it would have still been viable, how it all would have penciled out.
I don't know, there were many public improvements for that, like Lincoln Square behind the Fresh Market. We had them put in a turn lane on Pecro, or on Brisha Road and a couple other things that would, that if that was waived.
Yeah, I guess when I said public improvements, I meant things that ultimately become the ownership of the city. So the roadway, the parkway trees, sidewalks, all of that are public improvements, the utilities they have to run through.
Right.
All of that, right.
I would be interested in hearing what Tracy has to say about if this is enough. Is this what's kept you out of Geneva? Or is it other things?
Do you want to come forward?
I'm trying to explain, I'm trying to get my head around how to explain the housing developer for affordable housing. We have this huge application process and we have to figure out where we can build for the money that we have. And incentives are huge for us. Because we have this 100-page Bible from the Illinois Housing Development Authority, they give it to you every two years, it's called the Qualified Allocation Plan, the QAP. And it tells you what they want. Then they give it to you and say, okay, housing developer, you go find in Illinois where you want to build this. So we have to go and find where can we afford to build this with incentives that are great. But there's also, it's a, it's a competitive process, it's a scoring. So 87, there's, there were 87 preliminary project assessments given to the state on December 4th in the state of Illinois. There's 87 applications for financing.
For specific projects?
Eighty-seven different projects throughout Illinois on December 4th were submitted. I had three. And there's a whole scoring thing. The incentives help financially, donations of land help on the scoring side. So there's 10 points if we get land donated in this QAP. And the QAP is a two-year Bible. I call it a Bible because it is, we have to follow it. So it depends on the year. Right now, the land donation is helpful. It's helping for the financing with the state, it's helpful with Federal Home Loan Bank Grant, there's points, there's incentives. So if you're donating, we get points for it, our score goes up, we get our project funding. So there's a, there's a lot of layers that we're dealing with other than trying to make the numbers work. So the incentives that you all are considering are huge to affordable housing developments. Because everything that we do, the for-profit developer, the way he puts his developments together, we have to pay all those same fees. Everything is the same. I actually met with someone who lives in a development across the street from where I'd like to build and what I'm proposing, he said, that's much nicer than what we're where we live. What we live in, you're building much nicer and that's affordable. But that's what we build. We do a higher scale at an affordable price because our general contractor negotiates and negotiates and negotiates on the materials. But all the soft costs, architect, civil engineer, all of that is all the same. So incentives help affordable housing, definitely.
Thank you.
Okay, Michael, I had a question.
Michael?
I did, David, when you were up there talking about the extra units that were available potentially, just, just to clarify, so if a development had 20 units and agreed to do three affordable units, they would get three additional market rate units or, or they would, so they'd just be back to the 20 market rate units they had?
Plus, plus the three affordable.
Plus the three affordable. Thanks.
But we would waive, all the incentives would apply to the affordable units, right?
That's a nice incentive.
Yeah, I guess I thought they got three, is this kind of what you were, I, I thought you were saying there would ultimately, I know you had a, a scenario by one of the slides, but I was thinking they would do three to affordable units, so they would get an extra three market rate units. So that would be a, in this scenario, like 26, but that's not the case. They would, there would still only be 23.
Right, they, they get the, right, it's only the 23, it's the 115% of the base density. So if the base density is 20, then go up to 23, at least three of them would have to be affordable.
Fifteen percent based off the initial density, not off the bonus density?
Right. And, but if they did four, then it goes to 24. So it's...
So you don't get the...
Well, no, I'm sorry, because it is the maximum.
Because that would exceed the 115%, right?
You're right. There it is. Nope, that's not this slide.
I guess I'm a little confused, I mean, this, this all sounds good to me, I'm a little confused what we're supposed to be doing because the city council's already decided some things are not viable for us, so we're not considering certain tools that are out there. They've already decided that for us. So I feel like they've kind of limited our recommendation going into it. So this all sounds good, I feel like it's kind of flushed out, though. I'm not really sure, we can ask a lot of questions, talk, I want to learn more about it, but I guess I'm not really sure what.
I think that the council gave us direction to draft incentives. So again, most of the communities that are out there that have these type of incentives do it as part of a inclusionary housing requirement, not just an incentive ordinance. So we drafted it as just an incentive-based ordinance. The council has not reviewed this and given us feedback on the components of these incentives yet, so we're looking for your input and feedback on, on the draft incentives. I know there's other tools that are out there that have kind of been put to the side for now, but we are looking for your input on, on this draft and if you think it makes sense or it's things that ought to be amended.
So they already eliminated, eliminated the demolition fees and the ADUs, so we can't go back and put that back in and say, hey, we'd really like to have those things in here too.
Right, I mean, this was, this was the strategy they wanted to pursue at this time, right.
I think we could, right, but then we already know what they're going to do with it.
Throw it out again.
So that means 26, the way I read that.
Fifteen percent is three units. So three of the, I think it's three of the 20, then, but they get an additional 15%.
Which is three. So you get 23 market rates.
Fifteen and 15%, which, which makes it kind of a wash, right?
So they get three additional market rate units, which would be 23.
Plus the three affordable, right?
But that would exceed the 115%.
Part of the original 20?
See, I didn't read it that way.
Part of the original, if they're part of the original 20, then it's...
It's part of the original 20, right. Is that right?
I'm not sure I'm answering what.
And ask him one question. At a time.
Okay, the 20 units, does that include the three affordable units in the 20, so there's 17 market rate and three affordable, and then they get the three bonus market rate?
Then they get the market rate back to 20, yes. So it's a total of 23.
It's not that they get a bonus of, that the three affordable are on top of the 20. Okay, that's how it gets to 23, not 26.
Yeah, so they're coming with a piece of land that you can build 20 units on, so 15% of those have to be, so it's three. Hey, if you do that, you get an extra, you get 15% bonus, so you get to basically...
I guess maybe poorly worded, simply it is, you get an additional three units if you make them affordable.
Right.
Yeah, got it.
And we'll waive the fees, permit fees, plan review fees.
For those three.
For those three, right.
So then the analysis becomes, is it, is it worth it on the affordable units for a developer that's doing, you know, all, all market rate units?
To get, to get that additional 15%.
Right.
Yes, Brad. What, not necessarily mentioned in by names, but maybe what or how many developers were consulted as part of this conception and/or what strategic partnerships in terms of nonprofits were brought in to help guide this, if any?
So we've, we've had a number of different discussions with different affordable housing developers over the years and recently, over the past few months. When drafting the ordinance, we talked to seven or eight different communities that either have an inclusionary housing requirement or incentive, reviewed each of them, had questions about their ordinances, surveyed them, got their feedback, asked them what's working, what's not working, how many units have you actually created, all, all of that. And I wish I had a clear answer to say that, you know, this is the most effective tool because, but it's so variable and the communities are so vastly different from each other. So my, I mean, really my takeaway is like, right now, we don't even have the tools to play. We, we don't, we don't have them there. So we need to establish those so we can go to the table and start having these negotiations. And then if they need to be amended, tweaked, based on our conditions in our community, our land values, our cash contributions to districts, what those impacts are, we can, we can go from there.
I mean, what it, what it does to us if we go in for like a special permit situation where we're dealing with a housing development and we want to increase the density, we can basically say, you got to take advantage of our incentives or we're not going there. So that, that's where it...
See that, can you, can you explain that scenario again where we...
The type of thing, let's say it's, they want to increase the density, they come in with a proposed PUD or a special permit where we've got to actually go in and weigh in on it. Let's just say it's a 60-unit development, but it requires some variations and some special conditions. The commission can say, all right, we might, might consider doing that as a PUD or a special permit, but, but we're not, if you don't include an inclusionary provision on it, we're not going there. You got to take advantage of our, our incentive portion of the ordinance or for us to move forward with that devote.
Or you may not even need the PUD or the variation if you went through the incentives.
Well, or they come in at right, yeah, if they come in at right, but if they come in with something a little bit heavy and we were like, well, we're not really that comfortable with it, but if you put the inclusionary portion in there, it makes it a little bit easier to, to talk about it. And if we don't have it in the ordinance, then we don't have that option to kind of like push them that direction, like, think about doing that because it's going to help your application. Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I, I was just going to say, just to follow that, so we kind of have to commit ourselves to selling the incentives.
Yeah, I mean, we've been using the greenhouse as a, as a case in point, right? Because we're, we're constantly, we were like lowering, yeah, we're going to, we're going to waive stuff, we're going to create higher density, we'll down, we'll, we'll rezone it, we'll do all this, we're still not getting affordable housing out of it. I mean, we've had numerous examples of that since I've been on the commission where we've come in, we've downzoned, you know, we've downzoned stuff, we've given waivers, we've, and we still get in $600,000 houses.
Yeah.
And it's just like, this is insane. We got to do, we got to try something else.
My whole point is, I, I fully believe in all this and I want to get to a point where we can actually do it and make, and get people to, to follow through with that in our community, so.
Get it built.
That's, my only real concern is, is it strong enough to get people to do that? And it's sort of hard to figure.
Right, because you showed that map where all this, the number of sites that have already come off the map because they've been developed at...
Market rate.
Yeah, market rate.
And if we fool with this, starting really very soft with this just being an incentive, oh, it didn't work after we tried two years and nothing happened, and then by then, how many sites are left on the map? And then you start fooling with it again, it, do we have the luxury of not being a little bit stronger right out of the box with this if we expect to have any land left to talk about?
Yes, when you say stronger, I mean...
Make it a requirement.
Make it a requirement.
Rather than an optional incentive.
City council will go for that.
No, they won't.
We, we could move this language forward, but also include in our recommendation to the city that they consider making it a requirement, developing some form of inclusionary. I mean, just at least put it, put, put our vote out there that we think this isn't strong enough.
I mean, clearly, we're going to have a public record of the meeting tonight, and if your, if your preference would be to do a requirement but understanding the council's direction or supportive of incentives, I mean, we can make that clear in your recommendation. And we can also recommend that the ordinance be revisited in a year. And have we gotten anywhere?
Geneva's in a very strong position in the development community. People want to come to this community and locate housing in it. We're coming from a position of strength. It's not like we're going to be, want the developers coming into this community. So that's where you can come in and say, okay, you come in, you're going to have to give us some affordable housing as part of that process. I mean, that, you know, that, that, we're not, not in the, we're not in the trying to acquire developer, well, we're at, we want the right development.
But we don't have that many spots to develop left. I think that's what I, what I'm seeing.
That's what I'm saying, is that...
So, yeah, we're in a strong position.
You come in at a stronger position and say, look, you know, we're, we're up against it, we're at a very, even if these were to switch over and actually hit this number, we'd be very lucky to hit our 100 and 180 unit number.
So are you...
I mean, if we got lucky and actually got it done, I mean, I don't think we'd get 180 units out of it, given what's left.
Right. So are you more in favor of the more mandatory, is what you're saying?
Yes. Because again, we're coming from a position of strength, whereas, you know, it's sort of, it's part of the process. I mean, we have, we have other impact fees and things that are associated there, dealing with the financial aspect of living in the city, but not the housing process, right? We take care of the schools, we take care of the parks, we take care of our utilities.
Why not take care of the social impact?
We don't take care of the, the housing demand that's in the community, it's like, well, where do we fall down?
Where does, I understood the conversation about in lieu of payments, that money goes into a trust?
Right.
And then what is that, what would that potentially be used for down the road then?
So you could use that money to acquire other properties. You know, if you collect it enough, you could acquire a property and then...
Who, who holds that trust, though? Is it the city holds that trust?
You would have to create like a, an affordable housing trust fund and probably a housing commission to oversee that. Or I think St. Charles...
The regional one or something.
They give theirs to the county and they, they determine how much of their, how much of their fund is allocated towards like rental assistance or down payment assistance for first-time home buyers. So you can, you can participate in those programs as well and say that, you know, we're allocating whatever, $100,000 for down payments for first-time home buyers. There's different ways you could use it, but you could also use it to acquire property, assemble property and then...
Incentivize new people that want to...
And then put an RFP out for an affordable housing developer and say, if we've got five acres, we'd like to see redeveloped for affordable housing. See what kind of proposals we get.
I like the idea of, of making a requirement. I also, though, would recommend in lieu of payment on that, as long as the money went into the trust and... As long as the money went into the trust and maybe down the road incentivize a builder that came in, there's money in that trust where he could take advantage of that. If he followed the rules, you know, to get affordable housing.
I think the, the council was not unanimous in their position on, on whether it should be a requirement versus incentives, but there was enough of a consensus that we, minimally, we want to do incentives and start there. So that was the direction we were given to, to draft this and bring it to the commission. If your recommendation, I guess it can kind of be twofold, that, you know, our preference is that it be a requirements, but short of that, are we comfortable with the incentives as they're drafted? Do we need to make changes to these? I guess, I guess that's what I'm seeking tonight.
Yeah, I mean, we, we could recommend this with some variations, as you've outlined, or some other things, but also include that we, we'd like to include an inclusionary housing ordinance. They, they can always take that out on their vote, right?
Right.
We're just a recommending body, but we can go forward with it.
We can, we can request any kind of ordinance provision we want.
And that's something we, we might consider. You said something about, I think it was St. Charles, in their fund, they can use it to help folks with down payments towards their first-time home buyer. I thought it was rather creative, and I don't know where you got this, but for the, for the for-sale units, you came up with the, in the fifteen-year time period, that it's got to stay affordable and, and trade hands as an affordable unit, and there'll be, you know, kind of the, the hammer there is this, this subordinated note from the city that, that is in place unless and until the affordability timeframe runs out or they sell it at market rate, right? If you, and I'm getting, I'm digressing a little bit, but if you used money in a fund to help Johnny and Susie buy a house, you'd want that to then be an affordable house, right? And would it be, would it be, and I know you haven't thought through this yet because that'd be part of an inclusionary, but I would think you'd want some similar type restrictions governing that, what they're using the down payment for if it's an affordable housing incentive.
I think that that program is income qualified. The, the assistance isn't just available for anybody. I think you do have to meet certain income thresholds to, to be eligible for, for that assistance with the county.
Okay, that'd be something to, to think through, though. Do you want comments on some of this language regarding the for-sale stuff, if I have that tonight?
Yeah, absolutely. That was certainly not my area of expertise.
Page, page four, affordability controls, for-sale affordable units. A1, it says the sale of affordable units to the first purchaser. It might be worth considering that the first purchaser should be arms-length and a third party. You don't want it to be related to a developer. You just, you know, I think it's just clear that this is to benefit a third party, not, not, not a subsidiary of the developer or something.
Page four, A1?
Yeah, it said the number one says the sale of affordable units to the first purchaser. Some more purchasers should be defined as a third-party arms-length party to the developer, not related to sub or a shell company that buys some of the units. And secondly, it should be someone who will use the property as its primary residence. Again, you're not selling it to someone to buy, to buy fifteen units and start renting them out in, in a program or something like that. So it should be arms-length, third-party, and used as primary residence. You mentioned down at the bottom of page four, in section two, number A, the bottom, it says you're, you're calculating the, included in the calculating of the basis of the home is the cost of repair or replacement of, where's page five, sorry? Of heating, electrical, and such and such. Is that, is that going to be validated by the city or verified? How's that calculated? The maximum sale price shall be what, what you paid, plus the appreciation, plus the cost of repair or replacement of, of those various components. Is that something that they'll have to come and demonstrate that they've actually had actual costs?
Hand inspected and estimates provided.
And if, and if the work hasn't been done, it'd be required to be done, I guess, right? So I just, we should think through some of the subtleties that, so that there's a way... In addition, like just below that, in section B, it says, the purchasers say execute a promissory note in favor of the city, an amount equal to the difference between the purchase price for the affordable unit and its fair market value is determined by a licensed appraiser. Is that an appraiser the purchaser hires, is it an appraiser the city hires, or do you each hire one and they agree on a number? Or do you hire three and you take the average of the three? There's all sorts of ways to do that. You just, right now, it, it just says a licensed appraiser, it doesn't say who controls hiring that appraiser.
I think some of this is, is more general because under section seven, you're required to answer into an affordable housing agreement.
Okay.
So I don't know if some of those details get worked out.
That would be a fair answer.
With the attorneys involved.
These are just things I thought about as reading it, right? Another subtle thing, it talks about if you do ultimately sell the house at market value and it's determined that the real market value is less than the initial cost of the home plus the promissory note owed to the city, which would have delineated market value initially, that the city forgives that portion of the debt. Just a subtle thing is that debt forgiveness is income, so that becomes income to the, to that homeowner. So there should be, if there's a way of structuring it so it doesn't, because they shouldn't be penalized if they're actually selling at a market rate, but on top of that, they've got a hundred thousand dollar note to the city that is called income to them in the year of sale. I don't know if there's a way to craft that or, or with, you know, within the tax or, or laws so that that doesn't become a burden to disincentivizes somebody from, from a sale that, that makes sense at some time. That's really it.
Who oversees all this stuff? You?
Right now, I think we will be, our department would be the facilitator, but I think when it comes to these kind of details and the agreement, we would certainly have our legal counsel involved and the developer would have their legal counsel involved to structure that agreement and work out those kind of details.
David, along those lines, would any developer who wanted to take advantage of these incentives necessitate that their project come through planning and zoning commission even if it was otherwise within, you know, used by right? So that everybody then is coming through with the commission?
I mean, anything more than four units is going to come through the commission. So I guess there is potential that if somebody wanted to develop one affordable unit as a tear-down infill or something, or just an infill, then it might not come before the commission. I don't know that the incentives would, would really allow that to happen or incentivize that to happen.
So some of these, some of these statements are very subjective, like it says the market rate units should be interspersed amongst all the units and that the exterior materials would be substantially the same. Would that be staff that would? Who makes that decision?
I think we would, we would be doing that review and then presenting our comments and opinions to the, to the commission as part of a development review.
And then another concern I had was, there's a lot of ways that units that start out affordable can ultimately no longer be considered affordable. For example, if a renter's income grows to exceed what was originally a qualifying income, but they can stay in the unit, and if a purchaser gets past that fifteen-year point or deals with all of the adjustments that have to be made, then the unit's no longer in the affordable pool. So as, given the small number of affordable units that we're likely to be able to see developed in Geneva because of available land, and then these ways that units no longer become affordable, could we down the road end up with a regression in terms of the number of affordable units again?
If your income increases and you, you now exceed the sixty percent or the eighty percent, you're allowed to stay in the unit, but the unit is still restricted from being resold to somebody not making that or to, or rented to a new tenant who's not qualified at sixty percent or below. So the housing stock remains the same. It's just, once you, once you generate enough income to surpass that sixty percent, you're probably saving and, and moving on to something else.
Well, maybe, or you're someone who no longer requires that kind of a unit and it's not available to the workers who do need it because you're still sitting in it and your income has gone up.
Right.
So it seems to me there's a possibility that the number of units would decline over time. I also wondered in terms of the rentals, maybe a way around that? Say you had an apartment complex that had ten units set aside as affordable and they were all occupied, and some of them were now occupied by people who no longer were below that threshold, but you had other units that were available within that complex. Could it change so that those folks whose now, whose income was now above the median would, could be charged a market rent and those, and another vacant unit could then be rented to, at a lower rate? Or do you have to attach it permanently to a specific unit?
Then you would be looking at reevaluating everybody's income every lease renewal, right? I mean, that seems like an administrative nightmare.
I don't know, it was just a thought.
Yeah.
Tracy's nodding her head.
Sure.
There's actually a term for it in affordable housing. I'm sorry. It's called the hundred and forty percent rule. So in section forty-two, if you've got a ten unit and you've got three market rates and those affordable units, one of them goes over a hundred and forty percent, that becomes market rate, and one of those market rate becomes a sixty percent. It's called the hundred and forty percent rule. I was impressed that you were going down that road. I thought you knew the rule.
Nice made up.
That's, in section forty-two, it's called the hundred and forty percent rule.
So can we do something like that? Just be there, okay. All right, it was just, just a thought. So there is some mechanism for maintaining the affordable units. Let me see if I had any other questions. We hit a lot of them. Oh, and that's, this one, I think John asked this. If, if a purchased affordable unit, can the homeowner then later rent it out at some point if they want to? Or does it always have to remain owner-occupied?
It has to remain owner-occupied is the way it's, it's written for that fifteen-year period.
Otherwise, they'd have a lower basis. They could rent it out at a market rate and...
Right, it's a good deal.
That's why you would get a bunch of people buying units and doing that.
Right, right, I'd like you to already ask that.
Did anything in here sort of define, like, how you define your income versus, like, a single, married? Do you get a large alimony payment from a former marriage, things like that? Like what can be included, what can not be included in terms of what you report as income?
We did not.
Follow what I'm saying? I didn't see anything in here that said like married couples, you should include the total of their, their income.
Well, if, if they're both working and living in the unit, you use both of their incomes. So it's, it's based on your household size and household income. Trying to find that.
I must have missed that.
So you have sixty percent for a one-person household, eighty percent for a one-person household, two-person household, three-person, four-person, and five-person. So that can include children in that, in that count of persons, but it should, that should reflect the household income, not just one of the incomes in the household.
Say that one, that last part one more time?
These numbers reflect the household income, not, not just the income of one individual in the household.
Okay. And so you require that?
Right.
Married or not married, two adults, living together, with children? It's everybody's combined income?
Right. The household income and family is very loosely defined anymore, right?
Okay, good. That's what I was hoping for.
So you don't get into like the nitty-gritty if they own a farm out in Montana and they have all this money? No, I'm serious, I mean, like...
Yeah, well, I was serious with the alimony, I mean, somebody...
Like, do they own, you know, a trust? And they're just applying based on what they're making because they want to stay in a certain tax bracket? How deep do you go into this? That's my question.
Well, we would probably partner with a not-for-profit that would certify income. There, there are not, nonprofits that do this.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, good.
Yeah, they have to be certified.
Right.
Yeah.
It's not something that our office, our office would be doing.
Yeah.
Oh, well, that answers my question of who's doing a lot of this work. You're not literally analyzing income.
You have to get a certificate of...
Certificate of qualification from...
Gotcha.
And that comes from a third party, so that the state recognizes.
Okay.
So, yeah, you're qualified.
Gotcha.
City's not going to qualify you.
That's reassuring.
I don't want to do that.
No, that's, that's insane. No.
Chairman, I sense that we've probably gotten all the comments we are going to get from the audience tonight unless anybody else has something else they want to say.
Chuck?
I was gonna...
Captain? I can't believe you've stayed quiet this whole time.
I'm Chuck Miles. Most of you know me, I'm kind of the, the affordable housing nut in Geneva, the affordable housing advocate.
Your address, sir?
Ten fifteen Westfield Course.
Thank you.
So I was on the Homes for Changing Region, as was Maureen, who left already, back in 2014, when we said, here's all the things we're going to do. Magically, we come to 2019, we're now finally doing some of those things and putting down in documents we want to do. Part of, you know, you asked about, Brad, you asked about whether some agencies have been brought into this. I'm on the board of the Association for Individual Development. We provide services in Kane and Kendall County for people with developmental disabilities and then also mental health in Kane and Kendall, as well as McHenry and DeKalb, and we serve about six thousand people a year. There's a hundred people with developmental disabilities, my daughter's one of them, in Geneva, looking for this type of housing. AID, whether you know it or not, we have, through the, the money of the 708 Board, we do have a Home on South Street, and that's, we have four young men living there, four young adults with developmental disabilities. But that took about four years to develop with donations from the 708 Board in order to do that. We, as AID, cannot afford to hold mortgages anymore. You know, the funding from the state is lower, so what we're doing is working with people like Tracy Manning at the Burton Foundation, and that's where we developed our first, with Tracy, the affordable housing property known as Water's Edge up there. So we have a number of our clients living there, as well as other people with, that are low-income. The nice part about the, the work we do with Tracy in our agency is we have staff on-site that will help people with, because most of those people are Medicaid-eligible, we can provide mental health services on-site. We take care of the people with medication. So these are the people that can live somewhat independently but need a certain amount of help. So Tracy developed Water's Edge, which has been a phenomenal success, and as we get into developing properties, you'll hear more about that. Just opened a new property just across the street essentially from that called Marison Mills, which is senior affordable housing, and also has developed, what is it called? Windmill Manor in Batavia, which is senior housing. And if you've seen any of these, they don't look like senior housing, or they don't look like affordable housing, they're not your grandma's affordable housing. So this is an important element. I've been pretty active in promoting this, but it's how we are going to take care of the people in our community that need the type of help, that are, either have mental health issues or developmental disability issues, as well as all the other people that live and work in Geneva. I'm also on the Strategic Plan Council, and this is, this came up again as one of the top two priorities for the city in terms of the things we want to work on strategically. So it fits in a lot of things we want to do. I'm glad to talk to any of you at any time about affordable housing and kind of the background of it and how we got here, a little bit more information. So, you know, somebody can get ahold of me. Brad can probably find me somewhere through the community chest. But it's really important, I'm glad you're looking at this, I'm very encouraged, to be honest with you, that you're trying to find ways to really make this work because that's not how it always works. This is, this is the easy part because we don't, aren't looking at a property. Once we get a property, it gets a lot more difficult. I was involved in the campaign of property, so I know how that works. But been through it, and it's worth the fight. So, do you have a question, Brad?
Yeah, would you, just your, just your personal opinion, based on all your experience, like to see it as an incentive or is it a requirement?
Well, I think the, the issue, like Tracy said, for this, the incentive part for the developer is really important, not only for the financial piece... Not only for the financial piece, but because it gives them the points to be able to get a property. One of the other things that gives them points is working with an agency like AID to provide services. So that's part of the reason we do it. We're one of the few places in the state that do that. Tracy was, I think Tracy and the Burton Foundation were the first group, certainly in Illinois, it might have been broader than that, that decided to do this and everybody told us it wouldn't work. Works great. In terms of, I, I think, you know, I know we have things in there about houses for sale. I don't think you're going to see much of that. You know, I think this is all, we need to focus primarily on the rental pieces of this. But what we're trying to do with, uh, the wording that's coming through you and eventually through the council is let people like Tracy know that Geneva is open and willing to do business with affordable housing developers. Because I could tell you, having worked with the affordable housing developer at Ever-, at Evergreen, who was down at Campana, the word among housing developers is, "Don't come to Geneva." Okay? We haven't done anything yet. Okay, we need to start doing things. So this kind of sets the message that here's the expectations in Geneva of what we can do and here's the things we'll consider in the Planning and Zoning Commission about the things that we're willing to work on with you as a developer to bring in affordable housing. So I said, I think it's really encouraging that you're, you're thinking about, is this going to do enough to drive, drive the, the affordable or drive the development of affordable housing? Um, real quickly, um, we talked about the inclusionary zoning. I, I agree. I don't like the idea of writing a check because that tends to get, nobody ever pays it. St. Charles has had this for years. They have some money sitting in an account they haven't done anything with. But I will tell you that when, um, the property was developed on the old St. Charles Mall, so there's a couple huge apartments, there's like six hundred apartments going in. Part of that, because of the inclusionary zoning, the developer there, who I think was Shodin, was, agreed to put in, I think, sixty-five affordable units, something like that?
Sixty to seventy.
Yeah, sixty to seventy affordable units. And what he did there, what Shodin did there, was they went to somebody like Tracy and said, "We're going to get an affordable housing developer to come in and do that," separate. Because this, working with IDA and all the things you have to do, uh, to do that, it's, um, I could tell you, when we first went through it as AID, we all thought we were going to jail. Because it's the most complicated way to get federal money to somebody to, um, to develop affordable housing you could possibly imagine. But it works. And it's been around for a long time. It's very successful, it's been used a lot. Um, and so that's where, that's the way AID is approaching our housing. That's the way, I think, Geneva is going to be able to make a dent in this one hundred and eighty units is by developing fully affordable units that are really phenomenal. And when we get closer to an actual property, we'll make sure you can get a chance to see some of those. I know some of our older minority have, so... Anyway, any questions? Okay, thanks, Ari.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make, like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved, seconded, slushed.
Uh, Evans.
Aye.
Pass a ride?
Aye.
Me.
Aye.
Britton House.
Aye.
Slifka.
Aye.
Stacking.
Aye.
So, as we enter our discussion period, we've got a...
I'm done, right?
You are done, I believe, yeah. We've got a couple things. We've got language changes that David specifically presented and then we have to decide if we're going to recommend as submitted or add-on that we think there should be an inclusionary housing requirement. So that's...
I think there should be an inclusionary housing requirement.
Would the inclusionary housing requirement get the incentives? If that makes sense?
Say that again? So...
Is it just like, you got to build in affordable housing, you, you have to, you can only charge this much? Or do you als-, do you get to not charge that much and get all the incentives that we're sort of proposing?
So, yeah, most inclusionary housing ordinances that require it also have the incentives built in.
Okay.
So, that, the big difference... But this proposal is, it's not a requirement, so there's no, there's no fee in lieu of, but otherwise the incentives are pretty much the same as you would find in a...
So if we went down that path, we'd have to state that we think an inclusionary, um, inclusionary housing requirement be adopted. We don't have a language for that to, to massage. So we'd have to say that we think that city staff should develop and bring back to the commission and city council.
Yeah, I, one thought I had, I'm just going to put it out there. One thought I had, and just kind of following on with John's comment, was it's sort of like carrot and stick. So it's sort of like we, you know, if you do not, it's required, okay? If you do not take advantage of the inclusionary provisions in the ordinance that are provided here, like you don't take advantage of this program, then you are required to do it in lieu of fee. So basically, if you don't opt to do this, it's required. If you don't opt to do this, then you have to pay a fee. But the problem with that is that the fee...
On top of the other fees.
But the fee doesn't get done. Because as the gentleman says, it just goes into a pool somewhere and we never get any housing built. So that's the only problem with that one.
And don't have a fee? Or can we add a requirement, the fee has, the money has to be spent in a certain period of time?
I don't know, it's hard, John.
I, I think that, what we talked about earlier, though, is that fee could go into a trust that is solely used for down payments for people that need it, that, you know, uh, or a myriad of different ways you could use that fee. Um, here's my feeling is, we send it to the city council and recommend it's required without the, the carrot of in lieu of payment. I think these, I think the city council will say, "No."
That's just taking it too far the other way.
That's taking it too far. So, so by saying in lieu of payment, I think we're, they may be more apt to say, "Okay, yeah, that makes sense."
Yeah. But, yeah, like, I agree. But again, it's kind of thing, like, St. Charles is like, have they used that money? What, how is it, how are they earmark that money in that pool? I'm not clear on that. Because typically what happens is it just sits there because there's nobody really acts on it. So we need a more active process, either like you're saying for, like, helping people payments or...
Maybe you give it to...
Some other mechanism to make it work.
Maybe you give it to the next builder that will take it. Yeah, nobody.
Yeah, I mean, but again, what typically does, what typically happens, and, and again, this, we've had this problem for a long time. So, what typically happens is if you don't have to develop or build a unit, it doesn't get built.
Right.
It just doesn't get built. Because it, you know, it's like, it takes a, it takes a third step and it's like, it's a bunch of other things to happen. And they never happen.
Well, I think the other thing, though...
As far as getting buildings, units in the ground, that's what I'm talking about.
But I think what would be interesting is kind of doing a, a test, right? And let's say in 2020, you have three guys that come in and developers that come in and say, "Hey, we're just going to pay the fee a year from now." Then we amend it and...
Yeah. We say, "We're not getting traction on it."
And in the meantime, three sites have gone off the board eligible.
Right, that's what we have to move quickly.
So we were just talking...
There's nothing left to talk about.
And maybe we, we put in there that we think this should be revisited with, in, in one year.
I just, again, we're, we're beyond time of, of trying to deal with this and just do the, the amount we have left. And we're, again, we're coming at it from a position of strength. So it's not like we are, like, we're going to scare people out of developing in this town. They're going to develop in this town. We just have to say, "You're going to..." Again, like I said before, we've taken care of the, the school district, the park district, the utilities and stuff. We just haven't taken care of the teachers in terms of where they can live.
I, I agree. And that's why revisiting in a year, we may say, "You know what? We're getting rid of the cash in lieu," right?
Nothing's happened.
Because nothing's happened. So you're now going to have, anybody that comes forward on the eighteen remaining sites or ten remaining sites is going to have to figure out a way to incorporate affordable housing.
Right, in the second or third year, we look at it and say, "It's not happening. We got, now we gotta, like, go hard all the way."
Right.
Right.
Because, again, we've got to be strong on this or it's just, it's just not going to happen. The, the, the price points they have to overcome in this community to build here is just, it's, it's daunting. It has to have, it has to have a little bit more teeth to it. Well, I, and I would expect that you would get most developers of housing, smaller housing developments paying the fees, right? But, but where's the biggest impact, you know, in terms of making it, um, required versus an incentive? Affordable housing developers, the incentives are the, they're not going to need to be told it's required, right? And, and that's where the big benefit to the incentive is. And that's where you're going to get the large, largest number of units. Um, getting a, you know, in, in six or seven or eight-unit developments, getting a unit or two makes an impact, certainly. Um, but I think the, the requirement aspect of it is, is not going to be needed by the, the developers, who, I think you've said that's mostly who you see, right?
Right, and I think, um, I think...
That's a good point.
You know, Chuck and Tracy's testimony, um, is kind of what we've been experiencing every, every time this comes up. You have affordable housing developers that know how to file, uh, file that one-hundred-page application.
Right, that's a good point.
They know what they're doing and that's what they specialize in, that's what they do. And then when you ask, uh, you know, a smaller housing developer, does market rate development, you know, to, to incorporate affordable housing into it, that isn't a daunting application process to look at.
Well, what Shodin did, he just said, "I'm going to give it, that portion of it off to her."
Right. And we don't have any sites that we're going to get six hundred units out of to get sixty affordable units.
Yeah, exactly.
So we don't, we don't have any developments of that magnitude coming, coming our way to, to enforce that kind of requirement.
Yeah, it's a niche. It's a niche market.
So, I, I think, I, I think the challenge for Geneva would be if we did have a requirement, we would see a lot of fees in lieu of, um, or we would see an affordable housing development. Um, and what do we do with those fees in lieu of? Yes, we can give down payment assistance or we can use it to acquire other properties and then do an RFP for those properties or, or whatever. Um, but that's going to take some time to, to have enough money to do something impactful with.
It's better than nothing. I mean, I get, I get, I, I do agree in what has St. Charles done with that money and all that, but, I mean, at least we are building a fund and we're doing something towards the end, even if it is going to take ten years to build enough to acquire a substantial property and do the RFP and everything like you're talking about.
And I'm not, I'm not advocating one way or the other.
Yeah.
Like, and the bigger picture problem I see with the fee in lieu of is that cost is getting passed along to somebody, right? The developer's not just paying that out of the kindness of his heart. He's going to factor that in, the cost of his development. And that's going to inflate the cost of those homes for the people that can't afford them.
Well, the, I guess the other question is then, if it's required, does the developer not come here?
Right.
Because he doesn't want to pay the fee in lieu, or he doesn't want to have to deal with building two, uh, affordable units and then so he doesn't develop.
Right.
So, I think that the interesting thing, though, is Tracy represents a non-for-profit affordable house builder, right?
Right.
What's the plausibility to, to Scott's point of, because of this community, what's the plausibility of those folks coming in here and building on those available sites?
Um, I can, I can tell you, there's serious interest.
Okay.
In the past three months, we've had two developers very seriously interested in the Lewis Road property.
In Watch property?
The Lewis Road property.
Yeah.
That's not landlocked, right? Wasn't there an, an access issue at one point?
It's, it's debatable.
It's challenging.
For another time.
That's, that's where, that's where it is right now.
Can I ask, I want to ask a question that follows up with what Michael said. Do you think that somebody who's a market rate developer, uh, who's doing a relatively small project, too small to give a piece of it away, like Shodin did, um, would not come in and do a project using the incentives and finance it traditionally? Not dealing with the IDA financing and all of that? Because that's not their area of expertise and I can see them not wanting to get into that. But I, it never occurred to me on a small project that the developer would. I assumed that they would finance it in whatever way they finance projects generally. Do you think that's not going to happen?
Yeah, I, I think, I, I should clarify, yeah, for, for a one or two-unit affordable housing project, you know, out of, out of six or eight, they're not going through the state for tax grants, right?
No, they'd never get it.
Right. They're not going to qualify. Um, so they're, they're not, but I mean, for a larger development where they want to do fifty or sixty units and we're saying you have to do, you know, fifteen or twenty of those as affordable, um, that's much more impactful and how do they, how do they manage that process?
But those are big corporations, development corporations, that probably have the means to figure it out, right?
Right, or they need even more density. Um, because like I said, most of the applications or the development proposals we've seen even conceptually are fifty to sixty units just to get, you know, in contention with those other eighty-seven applications. Um, so if that's, if that's a percentage of a larger development, Geneva's just so low-density that I don't, I don't see that happening.
If, if, yeah.
It's either going to be all affordable...
Right. Well...
Or we're going to need to support density that allows fifty units to be a percentage of a larger development.
If, if someone like the Burton Foundation needs federal funding or state funding, they're going to comply with the hundred-page application. In, in my history, I, I can think of just one project, but we financed two towers to a developer we gave traditional debt to. But they, they wanted to put in a certain percentage of affordable units inter-dispersed. I imagine, as I think back on it, because we didn't require it, they wanted to access probably some city-level incentives that we, we gain, you know, "Don't pay some fees here or there." They, they were, they got traditional bank debt. So, you know, for developers that just want to, want to build a bigger project or, or benefit from, and I don't know how the, this was in suburban Minneapolis. I don't know if it was, you know, maybe those incentives are on the entire project or something versus just on the units. I have no idea, but they did fifteen, I think fifteen percent or something of both, both towers. And these were seven, eight-story multifamily towers, so. But I, but I, but I seem to think that it's going to either be a affordable housing developer for a meaningful-sized project, a Lewis Road site, uh, or it's going to be a market rate developer, one or the other. And the market rate's not going to have the expertise unless the incentives are enough.
So, I just think for tonight, I think that we kind of finalized the wording of this. Um, I don't think it hurts us to recommend to the city council that we like the idea of a requirement. But if you do a requirement, you may consider in lieu of payments and do, do it, because this is so new, do a, a test after one year and see...
Yeah, absolutely.
Who you got. I, I think that what the city's looking for is just some, some additional recommendations based on how you ordered it, Dave. And then, as we've gone through the night, this came up and that can easily be explained of. There's only so much density. We think there's a, a, a more of an urgent need for this. The way you get an urgent need is make it required. But I just think they're going to, they're going to want that in lieu of.
Right.
Right.
Are we, that would add a whole nother level of complication to the situation, though, right? Like, you have to redraft, now we're creating a housing commission.
To be clear, what was advertised for this public hearing was incentive-based amendments, not a requirement. So, your recommendation can be, can be clear to say, "Our preference is a requirement." Um, short of that, we also support the incentives with some modifications.
Right.
Um, and if the council takes your recommendation and says, "You know, maybe we do want to do a requirement, we'll have to redraft it and we'll have to come back and we'll have to review that draft..."
Have another public hearing.
Through another, a public hearing and go back to the city council.
My, my concern there is just, are we losing some momentum?
They can just adopt the incentives. And if you want to recommend a sunset clause in, a sunset clause on the incentives, you can do that as well, to say, "Let's review this in a year and see if it's effective."
Okay.
I, I was thinking about if you, in a motion, saying, you know, "Make the recommendation for, for the, for the application, but then say, 'Planning and zoning commission also recommends that city council direct staff to bring forth inclusionary housing requirements for planned zoning commission approval.'" Because that's, that's what we'd have to do, right? We'd have to come, you'd have to craft language and bring it forth, as you just said.
Right, yeah.
And they might say, "Forget that, let's just approve it as submitted."
Would it make sense, um, for the, to do both? Is that, is that what maybe you're implying, like, "Let's adopt these incentives? We encourage them to, we recommend them to do that." And also think forward to required inclusionary housing.
And, yeah, just like they did here, direct staff to bring forth language regarding a, an inclusionary housing requirement.
But in the meantime, do this.
Do this.
Yeah.
There's no reason not to get this done.
Yeah, exactly.
And, and then also include that whatever is adopted should be revisited in twelve months to, to discuss the effectiveness.
Right.
I like all that.
So what's, what's being reviewed in twelve months? The incentive program?
Whatever, whatever the city, if the city council blows off or decides not to pursue the inclusionary housing, we come back in a year and we just look at what, what was in this package tonight and how's that working? And at that point, we may say, "It's not working, let's, now we think there needs to be the requirement because we've given it a year." We may... We may put another 12 months on that, just, as we learn, and we, because to Scott's point, there's only so many sites.
Well, and, and it's not, it's not uncommon. I mean, the, the few communities in Illinois that have done this are revisiting it on a regular basis, saying, we need to, we need to tweak that in lieu of fee, because it's not a deterrent.
It should be an annual review of it, period.
You know, people are just paying the fee, no problem, or our fee's way too high, and we're getting no development, we need, we need to lower that, and see.
Right.
So, I think it, you know, like any word, and it's, it's, it's always subject to amendments.
Let's do it.
So we, we have to talk about specific language, cause we were talking about demonstrating financial need and stuff like that.
Do those couple edits that David put in there?
So we have.
So the first was, I think there was consensus on this one, right? To eliminate the minimum requirement for incentive, the unit requirement?
Section two, I think that's fine, as you've, you've recommended it, section two. And what was the other one? Section four?
So, yeah, it was the cost offsets to including a demonstrated financial need to receive a waiver or a partial waiver. Honestly, I, I, I'm comfortable, I see both sides of the argument, it's a more attractive incentive if it's automatic, you don't have to demonstrate the need.
And, and where I was saying is, is take out the including a demonstrated financial need, but leave in or partial waiver, cause then that leaves some level, okay, am I getting a partial or a full? Well, let's talk about it.
I like that.
But do you, do you need some criteria, though, to evaluate it based on?
That criteria is the.
I mean, in terms of a but-for analysis or something like that, or, you know, as.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, cause there's no financial need requirement now, but it would be.
Right, so, I mean, it's.
If the city could say, well, you're getting these five other things, it feels like, you know, you should get, you know, you should get a half the fees waived or something, and then depending on how much the city wants.
I mean, there could be, because there could be, like the Lewis Road site, there could be a property contribution or a reduced sale, um, then the question becomes, do they need a full waiver?
So just take out the demonstrated need, yeah.
So, so section four, add or partial waiver.
Gotcha.
Okay, as submitted.
Is your agreement amongst?
I mean. I'm kind of in agreement, but I'm kind of, I kinda feel like what Mike said, I don't understand what the criteria for waiver or partial waiver is if we don't put in the demonstrated financial need part, cause that's what it's based on.
It's kind of suggesting the same thing, yeah.
I mean, we just, we've just traditionally struggled over that thing for when they come in doing a hardship on the wave on the fee for schools and stuff, we just don't know how to deal with it. It's like, why, why are you coming for a pass for a waiver?
Does that get very complicated and potentially legal? I mean, I'm almost thinking, not adding that in, it becomes automatic, there's no argument, there's no discussion, it's very incentivized for developers.
It's only on the affordable units, right?
It's only on affordable units, and so like, we have to give them a go.
But look, to your point, if it's a 75-unit all affordable with turning lanes and.
It's a lot of money.
It could be a lot of money.
Particularly, um.
You could say, receive a waiver of some or all building permit fees, some are all, I don't know, that does the same thing, maybe.
I think it gives you a little bit of an out, though.
So, so David, these are.
I think it gives you a little bit of an out by saying partial waiver.
But if, if we want.
But these are also eligible, I'm sorry, eligible, um, in TIF districts, or they could become a TIF district?
Could come to us and say.
Potentially, for a large development?
Thousand's too much.
Affordable housing, could, yeah, could be located in one of the TIF districts, uh, but to use, to use TIF funds, there's, there's eligible costs that you, you have to.
Right, so you would get, I mean, that would be addressed that way if it were in a TIF district.
So, right, so there's, there's the TIF, there's the property contribution, there's the fee waivers, there's all these different tools we could use, the question is, do we always wanna use the fee waiver? Is that an automatic?
Do they, yeah, do they get the full menu, or do they get some and all to make the project work, right?
Uh, I mean, depends on the location.
So, so I guess the, I would feel a, a strong builder that wants to do this is gonna be a good negotiator, so he's gonna sit down with you or whoever and say, okay, I'm willing to do this, but I need these things. And at some point, you guys, you know, I, we have to trust the fact that you guys are gonna negotiate the best you can. At the end of the day, if he says, hey, I'm gonna go to Glen Ellen or stay here in Geneva, I mean, you gotta give him what he wants to stay here in Geneva. But I just think if you just say, hey, you receive a waiver, and then you get someone that develops 50 units, and you're waiving all the school fees, city fees, building roads, I mean, that's, to me, that's a lot of money, and the burden's on other people then, at that point.
But when, I think the concern is we're, we're overloading them with too many incentives? Is that, is that the concern?
No, what I'm saying is, is.
And we want an out to, to pull back?
No, Brad, I'm just saying, by, by having that partial waiver in there, it's, it's very objective to me, subjective to me, that you just have something to fall back on. Ninety-nine percent of the time, you'll probably give them everything that they're looking for.
Especially if it's just 15% of any project.
Correct. But it's that one example of someone comes in and.
I feel like it would get, I don't know.
So your concern, John, is if somebody comes in with a six-unit, 60-unit project?
Yeah.
And they get a full waiver, so the school district goes ballistic.
Yeah, they get a full waiver, the city rebuilds, you know, spends $2 million rebuilding.
Water main.
The road in there, because they can't get to it, yeah.
And that, and that builder has no dog in the fight in that respect, he's gotten everything waived.
I can see.
And they say, well, you said, I get all the way fees waived, and it's $450,000.
And then the school district, if it's, if it's family housing, then, you know, there's 50 kids who come out of that.
I like starting out like this.
How about, can I make another suggestion? About, uh, the list, building permit fees, demolition fees, plan review, sewer, water connection, and/or cash contributions? Does that, so it's, it's not necessarily all of them?
So it does this.
Does that make a sense? Is, I mean, it's kinda the same thing?
I think it does the same thing as, well, partial of or all or some of building fees, I mean, I think it's.
Yeah, it's the same.
But these are fees, they're not building, I mean, this doesn't allude to building roads and.
That's what I was trying to.
No, yeah, I mean, these, these are strictly the, the standard connection fees, land cash fees, it's not the cost of doing the public improvements, cause those could be eligible costs either through our capital improvement program or through a TIF district.
Big money for schools, though, if, as 60 or 75 unit.
Right, so, right.
So when they're like, I need you to give me the property for free, I need you to build the roads, and I get all my fees waived, you're like, no, you don't get the property for free, you're already getting all your fees waived. You kinda negotiate from that point of view, where those are all automatic, I don't know, I guess it's all.
There's nothing to stop the developers, John said, from saying to the city, we, they say, what are we gonna get waived, and you say, well, you get half the school fees waived, and you get all of the other fees waived, and they say, well, you know what, I need all of it, they'll negotiate, and you gotta come back and justify to us in a, in a recommendation, or they do, why it makes sense to waive more of it.
I mean, it's, it's our standard practice, I mean, every, every infill retail space or restaurant comes in and says, what can you do for me?
Right.
You know, and we, we say, well, what do you need, and, and then we have to evaluate what, what's within our authority to do. So this is, this is really trying to give us the authority to, to have those negotiations on these items, which we don't, we don't have clearly defined.
So take out the demonstrated financial need and just leave it waiver, partial waiver.
Right.
And I think, because what if they don't demonstrate a financial need?
Well, who's to decide what a financial need is? Like John said, what's a reasonable profit?
Yeah, well, how do we decide whether somebody, a builder should make 12% or 20% profit?
But we're, but it says somebody will, right?
Right.
Somebody will make that decision.
It's a lot of onus to put on these guys.
And the way it's written, and if it's based only on demonstrating a financial need, does that tie your hands in terms of negotiating? Maybe it's not a financial need, but as you, you know, as you said, developers, how can you help me?
And, that's a good point, cause to Tracy's point, some things scored better on their applications than a fee waiver, you know, so a property, property contribution would score higher than a fee waiver, so they might prefer the property contribution.
We'll pay the fees, give us the property.
You might say, we're gonna give you the land, so don't even talk to us about fees, but.
We'll pay, we'll pay the fees, it'll, it'll move us up on the application.
Some flexibility is good.
So it might be good to have that flexibility, from their perspective as well.
Upon written request, the city may receive a waiver or partial waiver. Is that?
Shall, yeah, may, may might be a good thing to add.
May.
Well, now is that an incentive? That's, I struggled with that one myself, because may is, may is the question we have now, that we're trying to resolve, right? We will, we will do incentives, we will help you close the gap.
Well, and let's not forget that, at this point, they are building physical units in our town, so they should get a waiver of some sort, partial or all, so maybe shall's okay.
Shall's fine.
Shall's fine, okay, I agree.
Is there another one?
So I'm scratching the first part of that amendment, correct?
The demonstrated financial need?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the other one that was kind of tied to that was the Title 12, same thing.
Title 12.
Scratch that, and in that case, it, it should be a may, not a shall.
So scratch financial need, and change shall to may.
Right.
Okay.
All right.
Those were the two I had proposed, and if there's any others, I have your notes for the other section.
Just, yeah, just as you think through it, yeah. You ready? Okay. Okay, okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve text amendments to Chapter Two, definitions of Title 11 zoning of the Geneva Municipal Code, to add Chapter 16, parentheses, inclusionary housing, in parentheses, to Title 11 zoning of the Geneva Municipal Code, and text amendments to Chapter Four, parentheses, public open spaces, in parentheses, of Title 12 subdivisions of the Geneva Municipal Code, all related to incentives for the creation of affordable housing within the City of Geneva, comma, subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report, and further subject to recommended changes by staff as follows. In Section Two, okay as submitted by David tonight in his notes, Section Four, to add or partial waiver, where delineated on David's slide, and in Title 12, Chapter Four, change the word shall to may. Also, I'd like to recommend that Planning and Zoning Commission feels that the city council should direct the staff to bring forth inclusionary housing requirements for Planning and Zoning Committee, Commission approval. That the, uh, city council should direct the staff to bring forth inclusionary housing requirements for Planning and Zoning Commission approval.
Consideration.
Uh, consideration.
Bring forth language.
Bring forth, bring, should, should direct city staff to bring forth inclusionary housing requirements for Planning and Zoning Commission consideration. And finally, that whatever is adopted at city council level should be reviewed by staff and commissions for its effectiveness in 12 months.
Or annually?
Annually instead.
Or annually, that's fine with me, it's kind of, yes, should be reviewed annually.
I think annually would be fine.
Right. We should touch this every year. What's that? No, it's okay.
Can you give that to me though, when you're done?
Uh, sure, I'll, I'll gladly give it to you. It's not in any.
Do you wanna read it back?
Okay. I can, I can, you, I can sit with you after this, too, for two minutes.
But I think that was a well-formed recommendation.
Second?
Vote and second it.
Okay.
Alrighty, Evans?
Aye.
Casarag?
Aye.
Me?
Aye.
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 All right. What's it, is going to council one?
If we can get this all together, it'd be the January 6th city council meeting, so after the holidays here.
Yeah, right.
I do have a new business question.
Sure.
If that was appropriate.
We're there.
Now that city council has done their thing with recreational marijuana sales, I was wondering if we should consider, the city should consider, um, like signage requirements, and I know there's some already defined in the state law, I read that about not using the leaf and things like that, but more specific to the town and the character of the town that we live in, um, just to be more clear and upfront, and not get caught with neon lights, and I don't, that CBD sign drives me crazy on Randall Road by Juul, um, that does have the leaf in it, but, and I know that wouldn't be allowed, but I don't know, just kinda rehone in now that we understand what we're dealing with, revisit how we want that all to appear.
So, um, the state does have restrictions on what can and cannot be included in their advertisements and their signage, um, I don't have that list with me, but they can't have leaf buds, it can't, um, can't be attractive to children, it can't promote, you know, that it, it causes this element or that element, or cures it. But the number one rule with signed regulations is that they have to be content neutral. So you can't come up with specific regulations for a certain use or type of use.
Okay.
So, that, your regulations can, you could talk about the size, the lighting, um, but you can't get into what it can or cannot say, or you can't establish separate requirements for different types of uses. And that, that's been challenged a number of times and upheld in recent years, so I think in the historic district, we have, we have some design guidelines on lighting, you know, we've got restrictions against the neon tubing and things like that, and how much of a window you can cover with signage. We have some abuse of that, certainly, but, um, I, I would, I would be hesitant, I guess, to create any regulations that are specific to that use.
Okay.
If we need to revise or revisit our signed regulations, we need to do that as a whole.
Okay.
David, can, it isn't often that we have made a recommendation that has been so greatly changed at the council level as the cannabis recommendation was. Can you shed some light on what their thinking was and how we ended up on a very different page here and there?
Did you say, it isn't often?
It isn't that often.
Right, it's, it's not, and, um.
Particularly when we're unanimous.
Right.
It, it, it was not unanimous, that's for sure, I mean, I think that, that's the first thing I wanna say is.
When we were, I think we were unanimous.
You were unanimous, but the council's decision was not, so it was not an easy discussion for the council. If you watched any portion of the meeting, I mean, we, we were there for three and a half hours, there were amendments to amendments, um, to amendments, back and forth, um, for, for quite some time, so it was, it was a split vote, and ultimately, the mayor had to break the tie. So, it, it wasn't that they didn't take this commission's recommendation into account or seriously, um, it's a difficult issue, and really kind of an unprecedented, um, zoning issue because of the way the state pushed this forward. But to, to summarize how they got to where they were, I think there was a, a split of the council that were in favor of having dispensaries in town, and there was a split that were, um, either opposed or had concerns about how many and location, um, so that was the series of amendments that went back and forth, you know, restricting it to one on the east side, one on the west side, uh, restricting it, um, separation requirements from different uses, so that, I mean, there was a lot of back and forth, and ultimately, what wound up passing was, um, one recreational and one medical dispensary, um, in the zones that were originally identified by, by staff that we presented to the commission. But, but instead of adding too many other restrictions, just saying, well, restrict it to one of each, and then limiting the hours of operation from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, right? And then, um, the other change was that we had the 150-foot buffer requirement from residential areas and schools and daycares for all the cannabis uses, and there was a recommendation, or they acted to eliminate that buffer requirement for, um, some of the industrial uses, uh, the processors, the infusers, the transporters, because in their opinion, it was no different than any other industrial use, and why would we put a buffer on that when we don't have it on other similar uses? So, I guess that was three and a half hours in a nutshell.
Was it well-attended?
I would say about 20, maybe, from the public, so about the same that we had at the commission.
What's the buffer on the recreational?
So, there's a buffer requirement of 15, that is subject to the 150 feet from residential daycares and schools, but it's also 1,500 feet from any other dispensary. But we're only limiting it to one of each, unless they try to locate it right next door, you're not going to...
Well, does that mean they couldn't be combined into one?
Like a medical and a recreational? And that's what you're going to see first, is the medical dispensaries we have in the state are on the early approval list to get their recreational license.
But from what you're saying, they couldn't do it in the same location?
If it was one business, I think it could.
They could if it's one business?
I don't know that we're going to see it.
They couldn't be next door to each other.
I don't think we'll see a new wave of medical dispensaries only, because why would you shortchange yourself on the recreational aspect? I mean, if you're trying to make money, you would try to serve both, right?
I had a question about how the taxes worked. So, say a, how do I word this? Say, an existing business in Geneva decides to get into some of that light industrial versions of it, is there a tax on that part of it, the 3% tax, or is that just on dispensaries?
Only on the retail sales.
It's only on retail sales, okay. That answers my question. So, there's no tax on infusing and growing, craft growers and all that, on the city level?
Right.
Did council feel that access to the tax revenue was a big issue?
I don't, I mean, that really did not come up at all in the debate Monday night. But it was, if we're going to do it, they passed that resolution before that debate even happened, in early November, that if we wind up allowing dispensaries, we should collect that revenue.
I'm pretty surprised.
Yeah. I don't know what I am. My read of things was a mixed vote back in September when it first came up, and it was very mixed Monday.
I guess I'm just disappointed, you know, January 1st is a date, an arbitrary date on the calendar, that, you know, you can see how it affects other towns and everything else, and you don't have to be in the pool day one, you can watch from the side and do this in a year or two or three, but we had our voice, I guess.
Did they have many of the same people that we heard here?
Yeah, the crowd was pretty similar, yeah.
Because I don't think anyone spoke in favor of it at the public hearing.
No, back in September, at the policy discussion, those that spoke, it was about 50/50, and here it was, everybody was opposed.
Right.
I did receive an email from one gentleman after the fact, saying that he was in favor, but was the minority and was a little intimidated to speak. And then, yeah, we had a few in favor on Monday night, but I think the majority there were opposed as well. For other business, Paul and I have been looking into training opportunities for the commission and the APA, American Planning Association. They will come out to our site and, on a regular meeting night, offer a training session, and they can kind of customize that on different topics that we want to address. So, I just wanted to, I guess, ask if the commission's interested in that. We could try to arrange that on a night where we have no other business, and if you are interested, are there certain areas you want to dive into more, whether it's Open Meetings Act, or Findings of Fact, or Robert's Rules, or hot topics in planning and zoning?
He came out a few years ago and did a...
We were over at Fona.
Yeah, right, right, yeah.
I'd be very interested.
But we've had some new commissioners since then, and we've combined the board, so they'll be to offer it up again.
The Findings of Fact, that sounds good. I always struggle with that a little bit, but whatever maybe you identify where there's room for improvement, it'd be a good...
I think we have a very thoughtful and considerate commission, so I think we're fortunate, we do a pretty good job, but there's always ways to improve, so I think the trainings are beneficial.
That's fine, yeah.
Okay. Nobody's adamantly opposed to it?
No.
Okay. I just don't want to set it up and nobody show up. It might be one that we invite...
We could pay a fee in lieu of...
Yeah, right, right. You could send somebody and take that.
It could be one, too, where we maybe invite our neighboring communities, too, and see if they're interested and...
That'd be cool.
Oh, that would be nice. That would actually be very nice.
Yeah, the tri-cities or something.
Or maybe even invite the council to participate and understand exactly what we are doing or supposed to be doing at our public hearings.
Sure, they're more welcome to attend.
Okay.
All good ideas.
We'll look to set that up. We won't have a meeting on the 26th. That's okay with everyone?
Good.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. We're working on some text amendments that we hope to have ready for the first meeting in January.
The ninth.
And then, maybe the second meeting in January, we could potentially do this training, or maybe in February. But right now, we don't have anything else. Let me see, coming.
Okay. No movement on...
No, we are still awaiting a response from I-DOT, and that really does kind of...
Not much happens in December at the state level, probably.
Well, yeah, you had a holiday in November, you've got a holiday in December, so, we'll see. But, yeah, we're waiting on that, and then we can kind of lock down what a site plan can look like and move forward. That's all I got.
Move to a turn.
Go.